Uh, 7:01, and I'll call the meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee as a whole to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Ammons, Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson. Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
First, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, January 22nd. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the January 22nd meeting.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Any corrections or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Any additions to the agenda? Nope. Public input. I have one card from Bishop King James Underwood, does not wish to speak, but he'd asked his position be entered into the record, that they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, next we have presentations. Are there any presentations tonight? Nope. Okay, staff report. I dot traffic stop update, Urbana Police Department.
[inaudible].
Good evening.
There were two new major developments that were completed in the downtown. So Broadway Food Hall is now completed. I think many people have tried it, many different great options there. Piato also completed their remodel, and that actually included two kitchen remodels in there, and they're actually having space for rental of commissary, which was an area that was missing before. Some upcoming projects, the 200 South Vine RFP is currently being designed by a local designer, and that will be going out in the next couple of weeks. Also, the What's In Your Square, the visioning process for the site, including Lincoln Square Mall, Landmark Hotel, and the city-owned parking lots will start in spring 2018. The Think Urbana marketing campaign has really started, the Google campaign, that's been following and targeting people, you might have seen it pop up. It's actually, we've had, the webpage views are up to an average of 24 per day after that started in January. To date, there's been 30 projects and 66 units in Think Urbana. And as far as upcoming marketing events, we have one on the 20th, that's the Home Builders' Breakfast. We will actually be partnering with the Home Builders Association of East Illinois and their Coffee with a Builder, and we'll be doing that at Broadway Food Hall. Some other major events that are coming up, February 20th at 12:30 is our Business and Development Luncheon. We actually filled up today with 75 attendees. We're currently taking waitlist spots, and that's being sponsored by First State Bank, up to our first 50 attendees. Also, February 27th is UBA Connections Over Coffee. March 2nd is Urbana First Fridays, and as I said, March 20th is the Home Builders Association Breakfast. Any questions? Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
So I'm looking at the Think Urbana, and right now, it looks like there was a lot done in 2016, but 2017, it doesn't look like there is much that happened.
That was the Highland Green project largely, so that was put through as multiple single-family houses. So that was about 20 extra units that year, so we had a lot of single-family houses still. We do expect some other large projects, hopefully that'll bring those up as well, as people become more familiar with the program, and different ways they can use the program.
So were there two new constructions last year for 2017? Is that correct?
No, there were more than two, single-family.
I'm just looking at the bar chart at the bottom, and it...
Oh, so that's, these bar charts are year-to-date? So you're looking at from this time in January? That's just in January?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, thank you.
I think the 2015 in that chart is invisible. It starts with like 2016 and 2017. Oh, no.
Oh, no, it's there. We just...
It's just icy, it's a really narrow line, 2018.
Yep, and permits have been down per single-family across all of the different communities this year.
Any other questions for the meeting? Okay, thank you. Now, Urbana Police Department. Chief Morgan and Melissa.
Hello. All right, so in the packet, there should have been the 2017 Annual Report, which is a pretty lengthy look at, kind of doing a visual overview of the last 10 years of data comparing to 2017, and I'm gonna run through that here. This is gonna serve as the, kind of the quarter four, year end, and then next time, we'll do the first quarter, doing the two moving quarters. Okay, so I'm gonna just essentially run through the report. I've got, just looking at it visually up here, so we're gonna look at the number of stops that we've done, the, kind of our benchmark, the decision to stop, what happens after we stop someone, and then any searches or arrests that have occurred subsequent to the stops. So overall, our traffic stops, our total number of traffic stops, the blue line is looking at the 2017 stops, the green line is looking at the five-year rolling average. So what we're most interested in here is 2017. We see that our 2017 stops were significantly lower than the five-year average, and that had been trending down previously. So this is the density of all stops that were conducted in 2017. The maps that I had presented at previous ones were two years' worth of data, so this is, this is just 2017. You can see that the stops mainly cluster along the main thoroughfares, but there are, you know, there's some dispersion across, and then there's a key over here showing that the darkest red is in the highest density of traffic stops. So for our demographics of drivers, we stopped slightly fewer African-American drivers than we had in the past, slightly fewer Asian drivers, and slightly more Caucasian drivers. None of these differences were significant when we compared the Z-score to the five-year average from 2012 to 2016.
I'm sorry, did you say it is or is not significant?
It was, there was not a significant change from looking at 2017 compared to the previous five years, so 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, and then comparing that average to 2017, it wasn't a significant difference. There was a slight variation. So over the past five years, we stopped an average of 30% of African-American drivers compared to all of our traffic stops. In 2017, that number was 29.36%, so it was a small change, but it was not, not meaningful. So we updated the benchmark, that's in Section 2 of the, of the report. So what I've been doing is a, is a three-year, so looking at the past three years of the drivers of accidents. So any driver involved in any reported accident, whether they were at fault or not, is counted in the benchmark. That was an improvement over what we had been doing in the past, or what the I dot does, looking at all of the individuals that are of driving age that live within the jurisdiction. This is a better representation of the driving population of Urbana. The, the information that I had used in the past was 2014 to 2016. This now is updated through the end of 2017. So this just kind of shows you how we get the disparity ratio. So we stopped 9.77%, 9.77% of our stops were Asian drivers, 9.47% of our accidents were Asian drivers, so our ratio is, is 1.03. So an Asian driver, we stop an Asian driver about 3% more likely than we would expect based on the driving population, and that goes across for, for all races. Disparity ratio over time, showing that African-Americans consistently, we stop higher than, than what we would expect based on our, on our estimated driving population. That number has decreased in recent years. It peaked 2009, 2010, and then it's been fairly steady, but, but it's got a downward Looking at the, at the Z-score for this, looking at the average compared to the standard deviation from the past five years to the current year, our disparity ratios that have had meaningful change include African-American, that has decreased from 1.55 to 1.49. Hispanic has decreased from, I didn't change the color of that, 1.20 to 1.05. Asian stayed fairly, 1.03 the same, and then Caucasian drivers, we increased the disparity ratio from 1.84 to 1.87, meaning that Caucasian drivers are still 13% less likely to be stopped than we would expect based on the driving population, but the 2017 disparity ratio was higher than what it was in 2012 to 2016. And then this is the spatial distribution of drivers of different races. This is, this is, each map is relative to itself, so this isn't, you know, we stopped 136 Hispanic drivers, but the coloring of that is the same density as it is for Caucasian drivers, but we stopped 1,600, so this is just showing that the Hispanic drivers are concentrated compared to where, where we've stopped other Hispanic drivers, and the Caucasian drivers are concentrated compared to if we put all of those out on the map. So this is relative concentration, but it generally shows, we've got some, some differences in the areas that we stop drivers of different races. So we're more likely to stop African-American drivers up here on Bradley, we're more likely to stop Asian drivers over here on Lincoln. Caucasian drivers, we have some pockets over here on Windsor. So it's, generally, they follow kind of the same trends, but there, there are definitely some differences. We started tracking the motivation for stop in 2016, so there's not a five-year comparison, it's just looking at 2016 compared to 2017. This past year, we stopped more traffic issues, we were motivated by traffic issues for more stops, less so for community caretaking, and less so for targeted patrol. And then looking at the motivation for stop by, by the map, targeted patrol stops are significantly different from what we see with traffic issues, and then community caretaking issues we see are a bit more spread out than, than traffic issues. So again, those are relative to that type of stop for that map. Looking at the reason for stop, this is Section 3 in the report, most of our stops are for moving violations, about 70%, about 20% are for equipment violations, and then, you know, 8-ish percent are for license and registration violations. There has been some fluctuation, but that's within the expected range. We put this up here spatially as well, most of the moving violations are kind of on the main thoroughfares. License and registration violations have a bit more, a bit more variation, and then equipment violations as well. You see more of those on, on roads that aren't necessarily main thoroughfares. And then comparing our step traffic stops to non-step traffic stops, there's a significant amount of variation in this, so it's, it goes anywhere from, I think, 21% to 44%. So it's, it's outside of what we would expect, it's a little bit higher than what we would expect, but the, the standard deviation is pretty high. So about 40%, 38.7% of our stops last year were, were part of the Strategic Traffic, or Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, and then 61% of stops were conducted while officers were on patrol. And then looking at the, the spatial distribution of step stops versus non-step stops, that's, it's pretty stark. Our, our non-step stops are, you know, as to be expected, a bit more spread out, the step locations are predetermined, the non-step stops occur on patrol. And then looking at the outcome of the stop, if you're stopped in Urbana, a little bit more than half of the time, you're gonna get a ticket. About 40% of the time, it will result in a warning, and then more serious than a traffic violation is, is about 4% of the time. Again, fluctuation a little bit over, you know, this year compared to the past five years, but it's not, it's not significant. And then what we can do then is look at the disparity ratios of the outcomes. There are two places that we can look at the disparity ratio, we can look at the decision to stop, and then we can look at what happens after the stop. So the, the main one to pay attention to is just the, the middle one there, showing the disparity ratio of citations, of warnings, and then of more serious. So we can see that it's, it's pretty tightly clustered for citation until we get to Hispanic. We have problems with, with low baseline numbers here, so our Hispanic drivers are stopped about 4% of the time. So when we split that out, and we take, you know, 40% of 4%, a small fluctuation, and any of those numbers looks like it's a big change, so take that with, with a bit of a grain of salt. So looking at warnings, an Asian driver is, is a little bit more likely to receive a warning, an African-American driver is a little bit less likely to receive a warning, and a Caucasian driver is, is just about the same. And then looking at more serious than traffic violations, that doesn't happen very often, but when it does, African-Americans are significantly more likely to have a, a traffic outcome that ends in something that's, that's more serious than a traffic violation. I break that down on a later slide. This is, to, to go back to 2012 is a little bit problematic, I did it because we were looking at the five-year average, but in 2014, we had a policy change where we were no longer arresting drivers for, for certain less-serious offenses. So now, when we stop somebody for that, previously, it would generate, it would result in a nondiscretionary arrest, so that would make it now more serious than a traffic violation. 2014, 2015, 2016, it's, that, now that doesn't result in an arrest, so it is strictly a traffic citation. So those numbers, at least for the more serious, are a little bit, interpret those with caution. Looking at the, this is the time in minutes, not more-serious outcomes, this is the time in minutes of traffic stops from 2014 to 2017. And so there's, there's a bit of variation across races, but generally, it hovers around, around the same average. I didn't do this strictly for 2017, or break it down by year, because there are some outliers, and that really pulls the data. I didn't want to exclude the outliers, because I think that those are important to consider, but to, to break it down, again, if I take, you know, half of the stops and then 40% of the stops, then it's just, it shrinks the number. So this, this gives a little bit better picture than just doing it year by year by year. So overall, a citation is gonna be about 12 minutes, a warning's gonna be about nine and a half minutes, and then something more serious than that's gonna be about 24 minutes. So looking at the more-serious offenses, we pull all of the charges that are on, on the police report, so it's not just, not just the charge that made it more serious, not just the traffic offense, but it's everything that's on there, and there's not, there's not a better way to disaggregate that, but at least you can, you can see a bit of what, what's triggering, or what's making traffic violations result in something that's more serious. So usually, it's revoked license, it's warrants, it's driving under the influence of alcohol, there's some drug-related, and then, yeah, that's, that's essentially everything that's, that is more than 1% of, of all traffic, of all traffic stops that result in something that's more serious than a traffic violation. And then when we're stopping people, we're also finding that they're, they are operating an uninsured motor vehicle, driving under suspended license, operating a motor vehicle with suspended registration. So usually, the reason for these stops are more improper lane usage, traffic sign violation over your registration light.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Let you take a breath or two while we ask some questions. On the more-serious warrant in state, would that include warrants, say, on city charges? I know recently Judge DeFonis quashed a bunch of warrants.
Yeah.
And would you expect that number to go down next year because we don't run across those as much, or maybe that's a question for the chief?
It could, yeah. I don't know, I don't know how many of these warrants would have been as a result of someone not paying or not appearing on a city charge, but yeah, there's a possibility it'll go down because of that. We did quash quite a few warrants.
Okay.
So there weren't a ton of stops that resulted in arrest, and any of the warrants would result in an arrest. I believe there were 61 last year, so if we take out, you know, it might decrease it a little bit, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna make it go away.
And, and I know that as far as warrants go, some of those city warrants were champagne in other cities, not necessarily Urbana, but did you want to say something?
To clarify, Judge DeFonis's administrative order which quashed the warrants, those were warrants that were issued for failure to appear in ordinance violation court. Warrants issued by other courts in the system were not quashed, and it was across the board, not just Urbana.
Okay, thanks. Erin, did you have a question? Okay, okay, go ahead, thanks.
Okay. And then pulling the data for consent searches, this goes up to 2016. There were some issues with pulling the data for 2017. We have it, it's just, it's a little bit harder to get to at the moment, but we've been working with IT, and the issue has been resolved, so I will be able to get that, and I can send it out separately, or I can report it at the next quarterly. But this goes up through the end of 2016. We do consent searches in, in less than 1% of, of all searches. They are predominantly breaking down percentage, we, we search more African-American drivers than we do Caucasian drivers percentage-wise. It's a really small number, so we did, we did 10 consent searches in 2016. For dog sniffs, we did a little bit more than that. We did, we did 17 dog sniffs in 2016. We did seven with Caucasian drivers, 10 with African-American drivers, and then there's a table, both of those tables are followed up in the report with the percentage of time that contraband was found. It's about, it's about half the time, a little bit more than half the time in dog sniffs, and a little bit less than half the time in consent searches, about 35% as a, as an And then looking at the number of arrests from traffic stops, I went all the way back to, you know, 10 years prior, and then I have this red line here that shows when we, we had the policy change, and we stopped arresting individuals for, for certain offenses. So you can see that it's, it had a general decline, but it's been significantly lower the last few years. We custodally arrested 61 individuals last year as, as it related to traffic stops. As, as a percentage by race, most, most of our arrests have been of African-American drivers. In 2017, we arrested 35 African-American drivers, 23 Caucasians, one Hispanic, and one Asian driver. When I ran the charges, 95% of those were nondiscretionary. It's warrants, it's driving under the influence, it's driving under revoked license or registration. So these are, these are not discretionary arrests, these are, these are arrests that have to take place based on the charges that are there, but it doesn't happen very often. So in 2017, we did fewer traffic stops than we had done in the past, we did more step stops than we had done in the past. There was not a meaningful change in the reason for the stop, but there is still racial differences in the reason for the stop. Our African-American disparity ratio is right about 1.5. That is a meaningful decrease than, from what we had seen in the previous five years. There's been some fluctuations in the disparity ratio for outcomes, but it maintains fairly close to 1 for citation and warning. We do a pretty low number of searches, of consent searches and dog sniffs, and we arrest few drivers from traffic stops. There are racial differences, particularly within arrests, but with, looking further at the data, they're nondiscretionary. Our next steps are gonna be to internally monitor changes in the disparity ratio, and then our quarterly report with a new format will be distributed in the packet, and our quarter one presentation will conclude after the end of the quarter, after the quarter concludes in March.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions for Melissa?
Yes.
Or the chief? Erin?
So, thank you all for the presentation. I know you, you talk really fast, so, and I don't know if that's because of the time, which is, is how you talk, so it's hard to digest all of the information that you present, and I appreciate the fact that we've broken this up into some, in quarters, so we can try to get the information more frequently, but it's still a lot to digest, and some of the slides, yet again, we don't see until tonight, so only some of them were in the actual packet, that's what you presented. So I wanna slow down a little bit and just ask a few questions.
Okay.
The percentage of drivers that you're working with, so that I understand, I think the public will understand better too, is that the number of accidents, basically, from each ethnic group is what you use to determine the driving population for the city of Urbana?
That is correct.
What is that for African-Americans?
It is 19, well, let me find it in the packet here, or in the... 19.67%, it's on page nine, and that gives it by year, so I do a rolling three-year. So last year, it was, we used the number of 18.60, when that was updated with 2017 accident data, it's 19.67 for the percentage of the driving population that we estimate to be African-American in Urbana city streets.
So what would the, and I would like for you to do this, what would the numbers for African-American drivers look like if we were stopped at the rate that you just quoted? Do you have that information?
I don't, but I can do it quickly.
Can Sylvia do it while you answer a question? No, I'm just... And what I would like to see happen with that, Melissa, is to be, run the numbers at the rate of the accident number, percentage that you just gave, but also at the, when you talk about citations versus warnings. Whatever that ratio is, I'd like for that ratio to stay the same when you run those numbers. So don't come back, basically what I'm saying, with 19.67, so therefore, this should be the number of citations, and this should be the number of warnings, but based upon what we actually see happening, right? Because you, you quote, I'm trying to be as clear as I can, I know it's difficult because I'm trying to be clear. So citations, it looks like African-Americans are getting citations less than one, than, than what they should based upon the driving population. Is that correct?
Based on the stopped population.
Based upon the stopped population.
So that uses a different denominator.
Okay, so...
So we use a different benchmark. So when we, when we expect to stop somebody, it's based on who we see driving around, but once we stop somebody, we know the race of the driver, and so when we're measuring the racial disparity, it's not, are we ticketing African-Americans at the rate that we think they're driving around, but we are ticketing different races of drivers at the rate that we stop them, if that makes sense.
Yes, so basically, the number of stops, which is the disparity, or the, yes, 1.5 for African-Americans, right?
Yeah.
Which in layman's terms means that we're 50% more likely to be stopped than we should be, or, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's, it's about 273 more African-American drivers than, than we, if we had stopped it, if it were a 1.0, it would be 600. We stopped 873.
So 273 incidents less if we were stopped at the ratio that we should based upon...
It would be 200, yeah, 273 fewer stops for African-American drivers.
I just want that to sit there for a minute for people, right? Because this is ultimately what we're talking about, and I think it's important for us to see the more-serious offenses and things like that, but ultimately, what I've been trying to wrap my head around, and the people who, who talk to me about this are saying, they need numbers like what you just shared. So in a given year, we just talked, or even up to the, the numbers you just gave us, we're talking about 273 stops that would not have taken place for African-Americans had we been stopped at the rate that we, according to the accident...
It's approximation, so now, if I'm taking 273 stops away from African-American race, then it needs to go somewhere else, and that's gonna shift it around too, but it's, it's approximate, yeah.
Okay. Well, I won't get into the shift, that takes me down a different rabbit hole that I don't want to go into right now. But 273 stops, and a certain percentage of those stops are going to equate to fines and fees, or various different things, right?
Yes, about 140.
Go ahead, please.
100, well, it's, if we're ticketing people about half of the time.
So we're talking about a fine or a fee, 50% of the time, 140-something? You're so good with these numbers, say it again, how many?
It's about 140.
And what's the average fine for us?
That's set by the...
Set by the state, most citations for general moving violations are $120.
So 120 times 145, more than we should be stopped, right?
More than we would expect based on the driving population.
More than we should be stopped then, right? Exactly. All right, so somebody's gonna calculate, oh, is that what you're doing? Oh, I thought she was calculating the number for us.
I'm getting it, Erin.
All right, thank you.
Back of the napkin numbers here, so...
All right, so, all right, that was just one point, because a couple of people approached me, they wanted an actual hard number, of what does that actually look like, right? $16,800 out of the, for all intents and purposes, the, one of the poorest segments of our community, $16,800 coming out, more than it should, right? So when you say things like, "But it has a downward trend," right? To the poor in the community, a downward trend is still not getting us where we want to go. And I know we're working on this, I wanna be very clear, because we've talked about this, and I think we're moving in the right direction, but I still think it's important to drive home the point in situations like this, that the information that you shared, you share it in such a way that it sounds that we, you know, we're moving in a particular way, but the reality for people is that this is still happening, right? And this is still the impact on us economically and from police and community relations, right? So I just want people to really think about that, where we're moving, and are we moving quickly enough in the right direction? One of the other things that I saw, if you go back to consent and dog sniffs...
Yes.
If you would pull that up for me. The actual, I want, I want you to show the number of stops for each group, Caucasians, African-Americans, Asians, the, what, when you find contraband, that's the one I'm looking for. What percentage of the time you actually find contraband?
So that...
It's in the packet, right?
It's, it's in the packet, kind of. So it's in the packet, not by year, but it's in the packet overall, because these numbers are pretty small. So with a, with an African-American driver, overall, from 2007 to 2016, we found contraband in 30% of the consent searches. With the Caucasian driver, we found contraband of the 72 searches, we found contraband 45.8%. And then Hispanic drivers of the 15 consent searches, 33%, page 25.
So I looked at it, I know, I know which page it's on, I wanted you to share it with the public, so we, because when you shared that information, you kind of shared it without the specifics, because the reality is that we actually find contraband on... Because the reality is that we actually find contraband almost fifty percent of the time when we, when we stop Caucasian drivers, and thirty percent when we stop African-Americans, and a little bit, thirty-three percent when we stop Latinos and Hispanics, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I just think it's important also for us to note that, out of seventy-two stops, thirty-six, basically, of them, net actual contraband for Caucasian drivers. The highest of any group, you actually find stuff on Caucasian drivers, but they are stopped the least across the board, right?
But that's, it's a, it's across ten years, so that those numbers, it's ten years' worth of data. But yes, you're, you're...
But at the end of the day...
You are correct.
From a policing standpoint, if we're trying to get contraband and drugs and guns off the streets, we actually find it more on Caucasian drivers than any other ethnic group. Is that true?
When we do consent searches, it is true.
When we do consent searches. But it is true?
With consent, yes.
Yes, okay. So, I just think these are important things to note, because the impression is that we're doing really good work, and I'm not saying that we're not, I'm saying that it appears as though, okay, if you stop eighty-seven African-Americans, you get consent searches from eighty-seven people, and you find drug paraphernalia or guns or something thirty percent of the time, that's great work. Well, then I think we should tell the full story, right? Because in seventy-two of the stops, we find drug paraphernalia or guns or whatever on fifty percent of Caucasian drivers. So then the public would say, well, maybe we, some, that's not adding up, right? So I think these are things that we should drive home, and the data should tell us these particular things. So, but I think you should make note of those particular points when you do your presentation. There was one other thing that, for us to look at, but, yeah, I don't quite know what the more serious offenses have to do with the disparities in the stops. So at that part of the presentation, if we're talking about disparities, where ethnic groups, particularly African-Americans, are being stopped more than anybody else, I don't know what the more serious stops, how, explain that to me. Why does that, why is that relevant?
So if, if you're stopped, and, and we conduct a consent search, and we find marijuana or we find drug paraphernalia, that is now something that's more serious than a traffic violation. So it's not, it's not something that we can give you a traffic citation or a traffic warning for, this is now elevated to a notice to appear or an ordinance violation. Similarly, if we stop you, and it turns out that you're driving under the influence, that's now more serious than a traffic violation, you're going to jail. So that, that is now something that, there's, there's not the, there's not the discretion to be able to just cite somebody or just warn somebody, this is now elevated to a more serious offense.
No, I guess, maybe Sylvia, Chief Morgan, I apologize, could explain this a little bit better. I appreciate, what I'm trying to get at is that those are things that happen post-stop, right?
Correct. So I think what we're trying to show is, once you're stopped, then what happens? Do you get a ticket? Do you get a warning? Or is it something, is something more serious happened? In which case, there's no really discretion in the more serious offenses. Ninety-five percent of them, there was no discretion. We had to take action. They were DUI, or they had a warrant, or they had some of these other violations that we say you need to go to jail for. So those are, it's just, just to show the, I think it's important to show, once we do know the race of the driver, what is happening at that point? And is it something we had discretion over, which was the citation or the warning, or something we had no discretion over, which was the more serious offense?
And I'm not saying that I don't think you should present the information, because I do think it's, it needs to be understood from pre-stop to post-stop, right? I do think that's important. But there's so much information about how this works, the policing and statistics and all that type of stuff, I didn't, it's a lot to process, right? So you present stuff, and you present it pretty fast, and it's a lot to digest, especially for the people at home who are trying to watch, or audience members. It's, it's hard for me to digest it, and I've been sitting here for a while. So, that's why I'm saying that maybe a focus more on, why is there a disparity, right? As opposed to what happens at the end? Not that we shouldn't do that, but what this is all stemmed from is, there is a disparity in why does it exist, right? And so maybe when you're doing the presentation, to focus on what the data tells you as to why the disparity exists. I think that would be helpful in, in the future presentations. I just want to share something, and then I'll be done, unless you all had a comment or something?
Well, I, I thought, I think it's important, I mean, obviously, this is the annual report, so it's just a little bit different, and, and we supply that to everybody ahead of time to have, to have a look at, and there's some, some pretty good descriptions in there. But I think in the past quarterly reports, we have shown some of why we think this is happening, when we show the maps and the citizen-initiated calls for service and those sorts of things. So, I, I think that has been presented. So we were, in this particular wrap-up of the year, kind of trying to show overall how this kind of compared to other years as an annual report, I think should. So, I, I think we have been doing that, and then we'll continue with that in the next quarterly update, showing some of those things.
Yeah, the quarterly update will be, will be a little bit bigger picture, not, not quite so in the weeds and looking at past years, but just generally where we are compared to where we've been the last quarter, or the quarters compared to that.
All right. So the last thing for me is that, in the information that you guys provided for us, you gave an example under motivation for stops, a pretextual stop, and this has been a subject of much conversation. So a pretextual stop, according to what you all have shared, is a pretextual stop can be defined as a stop conducted for a lawful reason, observed violation, for the purpose of investigating further suspected criminal activity. In a clear-cut traffic stop, then you give an example of a traffic stop where an officer is patrolling the area of Learman in Washington, when they observe two males standing in front of each, standing in front of each other inside the Phillips sixty-six gas station at fifteen-eleven East Washington. The officer noticed the males, one of the males had money in his hand and was about to give it to the other male until he saw the squad car. The male with the money immediately turned around and went inside of the store. The other male quickly got out into a, got into a black Ford Fusion and began driving out of the parking lot. It should be noted, the Phillips sixty-six is a high-drug activity area to the UPD. I also believe I possibly interrupted a hand-to-hand drug transaction. As the vehicle exited the Phillips sixty-six parking lot, the driver stopped at the stop sign at Learman in Washington. I noticed the driver failed to use his turning signal before turning westbound onto Washington. I then activated my overhead emergency lights to address these issues, and the driver pulled into the entrance of the Cove apartment, fifteen oh seven East Washington. So I appreciate the context, I appreciate an example of what you guys are presenting as a pretextual stop. I think this, it also highlighted for me that where the disconnect is when we're talking about pretextual stops. Because what I look at, and I'm reading from The New Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander, that many people have read and many people across the country have been looking at to address this issue of racial disparities. So, like consent searches, pretext stops are favorite tools of law enforcement in the war on drugs. A classic pretext stop is a traffic stop motivated not by any desire to enforce traffic laws, but instead motivated by a desire to hunt for drugs in the absence of any evidence of illegal drug activity. In other words, police officers use minor traffic violations as an excuse, a pretext, to search for drugs, even though there is not a shred of evidence suggesting the motorist is violating drug laws. So I think it was like the perfect example that you guys gave that really highlights the concern that's illuminated in The New Jim Crow. Because even the officer reports that there was no actual evidence of any criminal activity. It was only a suspicion, as a pretext stop usually is, right? And so, but you guys put it in as a lawful reason, an observed violation. It's not an observed violation, right? There was a suspicion...
Not using your turn signal is the observed violation that they're talking, that we spoke to.
True. But the reason that the officer even got behind the vehicle was because of what they thought was some sort of suspicious behavior. Because an individual has money in their hand and decides not to give it to another individual and turns the other way, to me, it's not suspicious activity, whether it's a high-crime area, high-drug area, or, you know, at Walmart. There was no actual evidence of a crime.
I understand what you're saying, but I would disagree with you.
Do you think there was an actual evidence of a crime in that situation?
I believe there was suspicion of a crime.
So, my, this is why I said we have a disagreement, and where we have some, some, some give and take here, or some pushback. Because I'm operating from a position that says that there is no criminal activity, so my freedom of movement should not be interrupted, or I shouldn't be thought of as some suspicious character, because you think I might have been doing something inappropriate, therefore you use the rule of law to now come and, in essence, harass me, right? Because you think something may have taken place. But there's no evidence of a criminal act taking place or any sort of violation of a drug law. So I just wanted to be clear that that's what I'm saying when I speak to you all about pretextual stops. I'm operating from this definition that we see in The New Jim Crow, and I noticed that what you all presented was that you said there was an actual lawful reason to initiate the stop. But the officer clearly says, and I'll repeat this again, it should be noted, no, I then activated my overhead emergency lights to address these issues. Issues is plural. If he was stopping them because there was a turning signal violation, then I would have been stopping them just to address the issue of a turn signal. But it was very clear that the officer wanted to address more than that. So he used a traffic stop as a pretext to look for criminal activity, to look for drugs.
Yes.
That is what happened.
Yes.
That is a pretextual stop, and that is part of the problem that we're saying we have in, in the community.
I understand that you have a problem with that.
No, 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 Chief Morgan. Erin doesn't have a problem. Our community has a problem with the disparity.
No, I understand that.
Sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, two-hundred-and-seventy-three stops, more than we should be stopped. So don't put this on Erin. The community has a problem with this, okay?
Okay. I don't know that you speak for the entire community. I do understand that that is the issue, and I do understand that we have not always agreed on this. Dennis and I have had some back and forth about this, and we don't always agree on, on how the things, how they transition and how police work is done, and I understand that.
So Chief, are you telling me that the community agrees that we should stop African-Americans fifty percent more than...
That's not what I said.
So, we, then the community has a problem with it, not just Erin, right?
If you say so, Erin.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Dean?
I'm curious, do we have a built-in margin for error when judging a person's race?
It is, the, the race is judged by the officer, which is, which is how we want to measure it. So if the officer judges a driver to be Caucasian, and they're marking it on the ticket that the driver is Caucasian, then that's, that's what we want. We want to know what the driver, what the, what the officer perception is. When the, when the tickets are entered, the, the service reps have, they can pull up the Secretary of State driver's license photos and then do a comparison if...
Right. I understand that we are going off the officer's perceived belief of that person's race. My question is, do we have a margin for error built into these numbers, assuming that there's going to be some mistakes made? For example, if you pulled over Mary Alice here, is she Asian or is she white? If you pull over me, am I Caucasian or am I Hispanic? The, the answer, both of these cases are both. Which one, are you going off our last name? I'm Hispanic, but my father was Norwegian, so I, my last name is Hazen. So are you going off Hazen, or are you going off the fact that I look dark this year because I was out in the sun a lot? I mean, I mean, what's the margin for error?
It is, it is what the officer writes on the ticket, is what is, what is being measured. I did do a margin of error for the drivers in accidents, because we, I didn't do it for the drivers in traffic stops, but that's, that's certainly something that I, that I could do.
But I mean, we don't have, we don't have like a solid number that we're putting in here for an assumed margin for error. We're not assuming that we're going to make mistakes.
Nope.
No? Okay.
So I can, I can do it with a, with the, you know, measure of dispersion, and I can come up with a, you know, the standard, the statistical standard error and see what the, what the range would be. But this is, this is our best guess, based on drivers of accidents, based on drivers that we stop, based on officer perception, which is, I would argue, what we want.
Right. Yeah, I'm just curious. I wonder how often they're, I wonder what the margin for error is. I wonder how, how often they're mistaken. There are African-Americans that are so light-skinned that you wouldn't know it.
Yeah. I did, well, I ran a data quality check, looking at, this is maybe a little bit more information than, than what's necessary to present here, but, but we report this information to the Department of Transportation, and then we also enter this information into our computer system. So I compared the two and did a line-by-line, and if, if we have another contact with an individual, the race is then updated. So if the race had been updated, so if, if I stopped you in a traffic stop, and then you also reported a crime, or you were a witness in a crime, or you were a victim or something, if the next officer changed your race, we did line-by-line comparisons, and then I had the, the service reps look at the driver's license photos. That was in about fifteen cases for three thousand traffic stops. So it wasn't, it didn't happen very often that it was, that it was changed by another officer.
Yeah, I've, I've seen that where I would look in arms on something and see that they put in there Asian or white, and I thought, that's not what I thought that person was. So this whole thing is based on human judgment of what a person's race is.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think, fairly well support Erin's concerns about the fact that there is a perception in the community that needs to be addressed. It's not, it's not one that maybe most people think about, but certainly there's a community, a section of the community that is very, very seriously affected by the results of pretextual stops. My question is, when an officer is about to pull somebody over, at what point do they run the license plate to find out the background of the individual that they're stopping?
It, it just depends. Sometimes they'll be able to punch in the number prior to doing the stop, but a lot of times, it's as they're actually doing, calling and radioing the stop to the dispatcher. And then, the, as far as the information about the driver, sometimes that's attached to the license plate, and sometimes it isn't. So, for instance, on your vehicle, it would come back and say the year, make a model, and if your driver's license is attached to that, and I don't know all the semantics on how and why some are and some aren't, but your driver's license may not even be attached to that, it may just be the registration. But if your driver's license is, it just gives your driver's license information, whether it's valid, or if it's suspended or revoked, or something like that. It doesn't give any other history about that driver.
So we don't see any record of court appearances or anything that are attached to a license plate?
No.
And then when, when, so I'm, I'm kind of curious about that, because then by the time the officer is actually approaching the driver to talk to them at the window, I guess it'd be the passenger window is usually the where the driver is...
No, we usually approach the driver's side window.
They will, by that time, there would be a check on, on the car registration or the license plate?
Well, again, it depends, I mean, the dispatcher would run the plate as well. So, the officer may, still may, or may not have seen the information on the license plate. It just kind of depends on how they do it. So, if I'm sitting at the...
But during the, but during the stop, ultimately, that will happen.
At some time during the stop, correct.
Right. He may go back to his own squad car and do this check.
Yes.
So then he's finding out information that he may not have known at all, which may lead then to the arrest, a warrant, a detainment, a dog sniff.
Generally, yes, we would run, well, we would run a check for warrants. That's a standard procedure, to run a check for warrants, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think it's a very murky area, and this is the one area that police practice could address that could change the disparity incidence in Urbana. So I think it needs to be addressed, it needs to be thought about. Police practice, if there are indications in the example that you give that the officer is thinking more, you know, on multiple levels and not on the one that he's legally addressing, which would be the turn signal failure, then we do have grounds for complaint.
Can I, can I say something?
You certainly can.
All right. So I would just like to change the scenario a little bit. We've been, obviously, having a rash of residential burglaries lately. And so the officers have been out, obviously, in the areas that have been hit, and desperately trying to find people that are responsible for these. And, say, for instance, there's a vehicle driving very slowly with their lights off down a street, and they decide to stop them for that, because they're in one of the areas that has been hit hard by these. And they stop them for not driving with their lights on. And their intent is to find out if they're, you know, possibly are up to no good. So pretextual stops are very important in how we do our jobs, not just related to drugs, but to all kinds of crimes. So that's why I believe that they are important, and I don't believe that the entire community believes that we should stop them altogether. That's why I said that.
All right. Well, I mean, I just wondering about the, you know, the timing between the decision of the officer to follow the car and then noticing that when the, when the suspect car makes a turn, it doesn't failing to signal. I mean, the car, is the police officer already tracking this individual with the intent to stop him or shadow him until there is a mistake? I mean, these are the things that, where the gray area comes in and is a concern.
That particular incident was, um, an actual incident, and it was right at the corner by the gas station. But I understand what you're saying of the other incidents we've talked about with people being followed. Yes, I understand.
Can I say from a statistical standpoint, this is extraordinary that we're even able to track this. Um, so we, IDOT does not require that we, we track the, the motivation for the stop. That was something that the, the Traffic Stop Commission decided to implement. That's something that we have on our, on our traffic tickets that the officers then indicate. This is not, um, something that's standardized, and it's not something that, that any other agency that I'm aware of does. So we can take and look and see how many of these, at, at the officer's motivation for when they decided to make the stop, why were you doing that? Was it a traffic issue or was it targeted patrol? Or were you, you know, trying to raise awareness in the community that, hey, you're, you know, you've got one taillight out. You need to probably get that taken care of. So that would be a community caretaking. Or am I stopping somebody because it, you know, they're in an area of high burglary and they're looking a little bit suspicious? They're driving without their lights, it's, but it's targeted patrol. So there's one further step that we're going to do that's, that's just now been implemented on the technology side. It, it had been on the tickets before, but it was kind of burdensome to, to track. Where if the, if the driver stops somebody regardless of the motivation for the stop, if they question the driver beyond the scope of the traffic stop, that's now an extra checkbox on the ticket. So that's now something else that I can, I can do a little bit further analysis into. So regardless of the reason for the stop, whether they were following them and looking for a reason to stop, or they stopped them and then it turns out that they noticed that there was, you know, a gun in the front seat or something. If, if it results in something more than a traffic stop, even if it's just a question, that's something that we're able to track now, and that's, that's not something that many departments are able to do. So the transparency of this is, is really fantastic.
Well, I appreciate that so much because it's through these details that we're actually going to find out and illuminate really where the problems can lie.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So along those lines, I just want to be clear that I understand targeted patrol, pretextual stops. I think I had asked this question before, but now I, I must admit I'm a little confused. So with the example that's in the report, um, the turn signal example, how would that be classified in this report?
Targeted patrol.
Okay, so it is, it would not, even though you stop them for a lawful reason, which they did not use their turn signal, it would be classified as targeted patrol?
Yes.
And targeted patrol as of 2017 was two percent of the traffic stops?
Correct.
Okay, so then if I look at page fourteen and I look at the race of the drivers by motivation of stops, we're looking at seventy-seven to eighty-two percent, sorry, targeted patrol. One point four-six to three point three. So African-Americans are stopped in addition more for targeted patrol reasons. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, what are the, what are the reasons for a consent search? What are the reasons that people do it, that they ask for consent?
There doesn't have to be any reason. But normally, normally they have maybe some underlying suspicion that there might be, um, there might be contraband in the vehicle of one nature of, you know, whether it's drugs or guns or other evidence.
So theoretically, at least by our procedures that we have in place, an officer could determine they want to do a consent search without any guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my last question has to do with running license plates. So I was, uh, I had the opportunity to do a ride-along in December, which was very interesting. And I rode with a great officer. One of the things that I noticed as we drove around and, and we were driving all over the city, we weren't just in a specific beat, was that we would be stopped and she would run license plates, you know, as, as we were going through. And I was quite amazed, I mean, she'd be running license plates as we were driving. So I'm curious, because you don't necessarily know if the driver is the owner of the car.
Correct.
How is that used? How is running a license plate used as you're driving through the city, if you run it?
So there's various reasons. Um, sometimes it will, uh, the actual registration, even though you have a plate on your car, could be suspended. The actual registration on the vehicle could be suspended. We do have a, a fair amount of, in, in the state where people will steal the, your sticker and put it on their vehicle. So it may show up as being expired versus, even though it shows a sticker, it could possibly be a stolen sticker or things like that. So just running license plates and checking, seeing if everything comes back and is valid and, and legal.
So if, um, if an individual pops up, the owner of the car pops up as having a, a open warrant, would you stop the vehicle?
More than likely, they would stop the vehicle and see if the registered owner was the actual driver.
Okay, and do we know the percentage of time that the, when they get stopped for that, that they, the driver is actually the owner of that car? I'm just curious.
No, I mean, no, we don't have that information right now, and I don't know.
I'm not saying it's easy to get.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's easy to get either. I don't, yeah, I wouldn't want to speak to how easy that is to get.
Um, I can say that we did a hundred and thirty-nine warrant arrests that started as a traffic stop from 2014 to 2017, and about eight percent of the traffic stops that we initiated in 2017 were for license or registration violations. So that's, answers two parts of it. So if you're looking for a license and registration violation, and how often does that happen? Eight percent of the time, that's the reason for the stop. And then for warrant arrests that started as a traffic stop, um, for, for four years, it was a hundred and thirty-nine.
So if you, if you're stopping a car, you run a license plate, realize that the owner has an open arrest, you stop the car, is that considered a traffic stop? Or is that considered something else? Would that be, so you run a license plate, the owner of the car has an open arrest, is that coded as a traffic stop?
It, it's, it's going to depend on if that's, if, if that's the only reason they stopped them, that might be coded, that might be coded as a, as a suspicious vehicle versus a traffic stop, possibly. But they may, they, I can't speak a hundred percent about that. Like, uh, there may be some traffic violation in addition to that, and that's the reason they use. So it may still be, you know, if-
So can you stop a vehicle if there's an open warrant on the owner of the vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Jared?
So my, uh, we talked about this the last time we had this report, uh, when we had the update, and I think it hooes of us to go over it again, and I don't know if this is, uh, not so much just direction to us as council members, uh, to the mayor, as we move forward with this, that, you know, so what we have in this report is a lot of what has happened. And so, you know, it's what it is. It's a report, it's telling us where we've been and, you know, what has happened over the years. But what is not in this report and what has, up until this point, largely been dictated through our verbal conversations at these meetings, is what are we going to do going forward? You know, we, you know, you know, have conjecture about it, we all think about it, but, you know, it never turns into any, it never manifests itself into anything physical that I can ever put my hands on. Yes, Dan?
I, I want to speak after you do.
Okay. And I'm sure that we're working on that, uh, to turn that into, to turn that into something else. And, you know, if we're doing it, we're great. But I feel like this is one half of where we need to go, you know? And that the next half of this is the part that I feel like is almost your, your report, Chief Morgan, where you tell us, okay, well, these are our policies, you know, I, I by no means want to, you know, seem like I'm a law enforcement professional. You're, you're the law enforcement professional, you know, you're, I, I would take your word, you know, before, before my own at any time, as far as your advice is concerned. So we all recognize what we have, that we have the problem, and we're all trying to find, okay, so what is our solution? What are, what are we going to do about this? How are we going to, how are we going to drop this, how are we going to drop this ratio? And I feel like this is something that needs to get, uh, you know, become a part of these reports, that becomes a part of our quarterly update, so on and so forth. I think I've made my point.
Mayor Merlin?
Just to, to repeat what was said here tonight, the report you have today is an annual report. So it covers all of last year, and it compares last year's data to the previous ten years of data. As we heard back in, um, November, whenever our last quarterly report was, Chief Morgan outlined some, um, specific, uh, uh, steps that was, were going to start January first of this year, changes in traffic enforcement. Now, we're not going into a lot of detail for obvious reasons, but changes have been implemented, and the goal is to reduce and eliminate this disparity in traffic stops. But those changes started January first. And Chief Morgan, if you want to, um, re- repeat or, you know, kind of summarize what you told us back in November, I think it's good for people to hear again.
So I, I think what, you know, what our statement back in, in December was, because it was a delayed report, was, um, that we were taking a different look at the step locations that we're doing for enforcement actions, and we were making some changes to that. And then we're also, um, we're also working with patrol officers. We've, uh, it's kind of an ongoing process, um, working with patrol officers in how they do their job. And so, um, those two things that we talked about, and, and I think specifically we also asked, like, we really need, we really need six months to look and see if that has any kind of impact on the disparity ratio. And so I think back in December, I asked if I could have those six months. Now, I mean, we're, we're happy to come to a quarterly report in, in April, but, um, three months really isn't, and, and I am taking that on the advice of Melissa, who does statistical stuff, and the amount of traffic stops we have in a three-month period not really being, um, a sufficient amount to measure whether there's been any, any kind of, uh, impact. So, um, we can do that quarterly report, or we can just wait until July and do the six months all at once. That's obviously not up to me, but that, that is something that I did ask for. Like, if you, I under, I mean, I, I do listen to everything everybody says, and, and I, because I do understand police work, there's certain things maybe we, we won't agree on, and, but I do agree that we need to try to reduce the disparity ratio. And so that is what I am trying to do. And I'm, I, again, asked for six months to see if I can have a change on that.
And we are changing practices.
Thank you. I just have a couple comments, questions. Um, first, I wanted to say thanks for all the, um, work on this. I think it's an appropriate level of detail for an annual report. And I really appreciate the, um, specific things you've kind of pulled out to help, help us compare year to year, in this case, and quarter to quarter in the quarterly reports. I think it was a goal when the IDOT, um, Traffic Stop Commission was established to come up with something like this, kind of a, um, what do you call it? Dashboard sort of thing that you can look at from time to time and compare and, and measure your progress. So, um, thanks for that. This is a twenty-some page report. It's much better than the two or three hundred pages we started with. So I think we've made a lot of progress in that respect. I think we've also made a lot of progress coming up with the benchmark that, um, we've all agreed on and updated every, well, every year, but for the past three years of traffic accidents. That was something we argued over for, uh, years before the IDOT study and, and for even a year after that. So I think hopefully that, um, has helped, helped us compare. I didn't notice in the, uh, in the percentages, say, for more, more serious offenses, the top one is driving under revoked license. Traffic offenses, one of the top ones is the suspended registration, which can probably lead to revoked license. A lot of these have economic, um, beginnings, I would say, where someone gets in trouble not being able to keep their license plate up to date, and then it just kind of snowballs. Is there any, I know there's no way to measure economics from the ticket information. Do you know of any studies that have been done that compare disparity on an economic basis?
Not offhand, but I can, I can do some research.
Okay. Fair enough.
Of specifically traffic stops?
Yeah. And we just, it's not something we can record, um, it's not something we ask about, but I was just wondering if that'd been done. And then for the step violations, um, are those only moving violations? If there's, can they tell if there's a license plate registration expired in a step stop? Or is that mostly just speeding?
The, the reason, they're, they're usually targeting a traffic problem, a traffic-related. It's either speeding or license plate lights or cell phone usage, seat belts. So even though seatbelt isn't a moving violation, technically, um, it is one that we do target during step as well because of the safety issue. So there's a variety of things, but usually they're not looking for a expired registration. That's something that might happen as, you know, I caught you for speeding and, oh, now you're, I see your registration is expired as well.
And then, uh, one last question for me. On the targeted patrol, the two percent targeted patrol stops from last year, I understand that all pretextual stops are targeted patrols. Are all, are all targeted patrol stops pretextual stops? Are those synonymous?
I, 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 probably most of them. I wouldn't say necessarily all of them, but, I mean, I could probably come up with scenarios where they wouldn't be, but I would say the majority probably are, yes.
Okay, that's all I had. Anyone else have any questions? We do have one, um, member from the audience that wanted to comment, but if there's no more questions, I think.
I, I have one question in relationship to the, um, two point two percent you said. I don't know who, if it was you, Chief, or Melissa, who said that that was the targeted patrol number. Was that for 2017?
Yes. Um, we just started measuring that with accuracy in 2016, so we've only got two years' worth of that.
So the targeted patrol, and, and it includes these pretextual stops, and we're going to find out whether or not they're synonymous. It was five point one in 2016 for African-Americans, four point three for Hispanics, and so on, three point seven-nine for Caucasian. In 2017, it's three point three for African-American, one point four for Hispanic, and two point nine for Caucasian. So there's a tremendous decrease, particularly for Hispanics, but everyone went down. But I don't, how do you get to two point two if targeted patrol says three point three? Is that, so collectively, out of everybody, it's two point two? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, um, on page, the, the page right before that, it's got the overall.
On page thirteen?
Page thirteen, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, I see that. So then what we're saying, what we see then is that even under the targeted patrol, African-Americans are still going to be higher than everybody else even under the targeted patrol, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Carol Ammons, Carol, did you want to talk?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the council and the mayor, my name is Carol Ammons. I'm 1108 North Bucy Avenue. I was watching the city council at home as I always do. I live in Urbana. I served on a council, and I've dealt with the same issue for the years I was on a council, as well as, as a county board member five years prior to that. This is probably my tenth year dealing with this same issue in the city of Urbana. But this evening I was compelled to come down as I listened to the engagement that I often watch from this council of Aaron Ammons, who represents the only black ward, considerable black ward, in the city of Urbana, and attempted to express that black people, black folk like me with two sons who are driving in the city of Urbana are absolutely, unequivocally supportive of getting to the bottom of the racial disparity as was demonstrated in your own numbers. In every single category, there's a racial disparity. There was no one area where black folks were not at the highest level. So I brought all these books for you. One of them came from the University of Illinois, Muukun Jing, used to be a student here, wrote this book. And in every single chapter of this book, America's First Black Town, black folks were harassed in that town. The Negro in Illinois, written by another professor from the University of Illinois. Black Cultural Front, every single chapter in every- Black Cultural Front, every single chapter in every book, The New Jim Crow, every one of these books talks about the same thing that you're talking about tonight. And what we often hear is, we're working on it. Every single chapter said, we're working on it, we're trying to stop the disparity, we don't know what's causing it, we won't deal with this thing called race, because that can't be the driver. As I pulled into the drive today to park my car, I have four cars, two sons driving each one of those cars, both African-American young men. Neither car is registered to my sons. They're all registered to me and my husband. And what I heard tonight is that if the driver doesn't match the license plate registration, that's a course for stopping my two boys. That should be so unacceptable to this city council, that you run my license plate, I, I see your head, but if your children were being stopped at the same rate, you might be differently positioned. But when I send my son out in a car in the city of Urbana, believe me, when he goes around the corner to feed his horse, I am always asking him why it takes 15 minutes more than he should, because I'm concerned, as a parent, about an engagement that has been written in every book that's on my shelf, that he may find himself doing absolutely nothing, have never been in trouble a day in their lives, none of my boys. But they are susceptible to every chapter in one of these books. And we should not spend the time trying to disregard Alderman Ammons every time he questions what has been written about for hundreds of years, and get to the bottom of it and reduce and eliminate the disparity. And anyone who tries to explain it away, Mayor Marlin, anyone who tries to explain this away, you should get rid of. Because for us in the city of Urbana, in a diverse city and community like this, I should not have to worry about my son driving my car around the corner. And that's a concern for me. That's what got me out of my seat tonight. I am responsible, just like you are, for making sure we have policies that are fair, just, and equitable in the state of Illinois. That is what my job is. And your job is to make sure that me, as a parent, don't have to worry about unusual search and seizure of my boys. That's your job. And I hope that the council seriously takes this under consideration, beyond, I'm working on it. I worked and saw every one of your slides. Nine of those suggestions will not do anything to address the disparity. The only thing that will actually address the disparity is how Chief Morgan decides to deal with her police on the front line. That's it. Meeting with people ain't going to solve this problem. They are stopping people for particular reasons, and some of those came out in the report tonight. That was very clear. When I read that report, I picked up The New Jim Crow, went exactly to page 67 and saw the same report. We have to do more than explain it away.
Thank you.
I would just like to repeat, as of January 1st, practices have been changed, and we will see, I think, some real results, and we will see changes in these disparity ratios.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 2018-002-005R, Urbana Climate Inheritance Resolution. I Matter, Scott Tess.
Thank you. I think you have, probably have some public comments, but before we get there, by way of one further staff report, I just wanted to mention, there is a memo in your packet titled Guaranteed Energy Savings Project. You may recall that the city selected an energy services company to engage in an investment in great energy audit. That is a, an exercise looking at all facilities and operations for energy savings that can pay for themselves with utility bill savings and operational savings. Our vendor has completed that study and identified a number of facilities improvements. Those improvements, as one large bundle or broken out separately or in different combinations, all can pay for themselves in the statutorily required 20-year period. However, no matter how we group or combine those different improvements, they all have annual cash flow deficits early on in that 20-year period. So they're savings, but not enough savings to get us to a first-year cash flow positive project. And so at this point, the city or the public works is not moving forward with that project. We would need to find some, some funding to cover those annual cash flow deficits in order to move forward. So the, the summary is that we're not moving forward at this time. We'll continue to evaluate our options, and I'll take any questions you may have on that.
Any questions for Scott on that? Dennis?
Yeah, I remember reading it. Okay, so it was a couple days ago, so you, and I appreciate the fact that, that you'd like to work, go forward on it. How many years do you feel that there's going to be a cash flow deficit? I can't remember what the figure was. Are we going to wait a couple of years? Is it going to be?
For the, for, for the biggest bundle of improvements, it's about a $3 million project, and it's nine years of cash flow, annual cash flow deficits, starting at, I think it was $55,000 deficit in year one, ending in year nine at something like a $5,000 deficit. And after that, you become cash flow positive with this cash flow analysis, and you make up those deficits, but you have to find a way to, to cover them in the first nine years.
And it's really hard to kickstart something that costly at this point in time. I can see that. Okay, thanks.
Were you going to present the I Matter thing, or do public input first, and then?
Yeah, I think public input first, maybe.
Okay. I have several people that want to speak at the time, and several people that just want to enter their, their position. So I don't think I had these in any particular order. Scott Green?
My name is Scott Green. I am a student at University of Illinois. I live in Urbana, and I'm also a student senator for the University of Illinois Student Government. I'm here in support for the I Matter Resolution. We passed a resolution in the student government in support of, of the resolution, both for Urbana and Champaign, and the findings of the climate report card, and basically next steps for what we want to see from the local governments. I just want to say that I think that environmentalism and climate justice are, are issues that transcend, you know, sort of green, trying to figure out what I'm trying to say. It transcends, it goes into so many sectors, you know, economic justice, you know, health and, and safety of communities, especially vulnerable communities, to issues of ecological justice. And it is something that, at this point in time, requires investment and requires, you know, really prioritizing it. But I think it's something that future generations, you know, my generation, generations after that, will look back on and, you know, at all levels, you know, whether it's federal, state, local, will look back and sort of assess what was done at each of these levels. And I think that, especially in this time, we're seeing an enormous abdication of responsibility at the federal level and at the state level, to a certain extent, with the exception of some legislation here in Illinois, such as the Future Energy Jobs Act. And I think that Urbana is the place to really put a strong, for, strong foot forward on this issue. And just as an anecdote, I live in a cooperative house here in Urbana called Harvest House, and there's about 14 of us in there. And one day, I, look, we got a mail, piece of mail from Ameren, and it gave us a quarterly assessment of our energy mix and the energy mix that we're getting. And half of this pie chart was black, and it said coal. I thought to myself, we're an environmentally related, environmentally aware and conscious, you know, co-op, we should be concerned that 50% of our energy is coming from coal. So I called up Ameren, and I got a quote for 100% wind energy through renewable energy credits. And they gave us a rate, it was, I think, one or two cents more expensive per kilowatt hour. And so we went with that. And then a year later, they asked us to renew it, and our rate was lower than the regular energy rate. So that's somewhere where, you know, I would love to see something like that. I mean, that's a consumer-level initiative, but I think that there are a lot of surprising ways that environmental justice can be achieved in a cost-effective and responsible manner. And I guess with that, I just want to, again, reiterate my support for the resolution. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Just for clarification, if you have energy, if you're buying energy through Urbana's municipal aggregation program, we do purchase REX, the renewable energy credits, for 100% of the energy. So anybody who just, you should automatically get that. If you come in, I don't know, Scott could explain it better, but there may be some point where if you come in, in the middle of a lease or something, you may have to opt into it, but.
Okay.
It should be automatically opt-in for most people. I know I didn't, I didn't have to do anything. It would say on your Ameren bill, municipal electric aggregation, but 90-some percent of the people in Urbana already get that.
Okay. That's good, that's news to me.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Oh.
Oh, any questions? Oh, Mayor Marlin.
I just wanted to piggyback on that. One of the challenges in Urbana is because we have such a transient population and so many renters which turn over every year, it's difficult to get that word out to people that if they're part of the Urbana's municipal electric aggregation program, you have 100% renewable energy. So anybody you can tell, please do.
Sure.
Because that option is available on the city website.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Rebecca Lauren?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Lauren. I'm a student at the University of Illinois and a resident of Urbana. I have been involved with the National I Matter Organization for several years now. I Matter, which is a national organization of youth, has gone through many transitions over the years. But around the time that I got involved, the focus was shifting to local action with the realization, again, that action was far too slow at larger scales. But when I first started talking to people about doing this project in Urbana, they looked at me like I was crazy. I was told that Urbana was already a leader in sustainability, and that it would be crazy to ask them for more. But the fact that Urbana is regarded as a leader is exactly why we need to pass this resolution, because scientists have made clear that what Urbana is currently committed to achieving is not enough. And as young people who will live with the consequences of our decisions today for the rest of our lives, I want to be clear that this is too big to fail. So I Matter's push for local action began a couple of years ago in St. Louis Park, Minnesota, which is a city of 48,000 people, similar in size to Urbana. Students presented a report card similar to the one that we presented, Urbana. St. Louis Park had no climate action plan at the time, but with students' involvement, they created a plan to be carbon neutral by 2040, and just last, just last week, they actually passed that plan, which is the most aggressive climate action plan in the state of Minnesota, and one of the most aggressive in the nation. So I know that some of you are hesitant about passing this resolution, with doubts about whether or not we'll be able to achieve these goals. But this is possible, and it's being done. And it seems to me that you either are a leader or you are not. And leadership is not planning for failure. It's not patting ourselves on the back for being better than most. It's not giving up at the moment, it becomes more challenging. In this case, the costs of inaction far outweigh any costs of acting. So call me crazy, but I can't see the logic in not even trying. So you have the choice right now to either join the, the growing ranks of cities committed to taking this seriously and paving the path forward, or making the mistake of underestimating our city and its potential. Regardless of your decision, I want to assure you that we aren't going away, that there are hundreds of students in this community who are deeply concerned for our future on this planet and are ready to stand up for it. We want to work with you to create the future that we want to live in, and we are here to stay. I know that we can do more. I know that it will be hard, but I also know that it is possible. And more importantly, I know that it's needed, maybe more than anything else we could do right now. And I have always known that Urbana will make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Rebecca? Okay, thanks. I'm going to mess this one up. Sohini Oswald? And Mary Jane Ovea?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sohini Oswald. I'm a student at the University of Illinois, and along with Mary Jane, we are co-presidents of Students for Environmental Concerns at the University of Illinois, and our, our cell comprises of about 100 residents, many of which live in Urbana. We would like to urge your support for this I Matter Resolution, because for us, the environment is of utmost importance. Creating climate-forward policy is very important to us, because we are the future. We, in 2040, will be 44 years old, and we'll be looking to the future to make sure that we are creating an even more just and equitable environment for future generations. I'd really urge you to support this bill, because as had been stated in the past, Urbana is a leader in sustainability, and we need to be continuing with that trend.
I agree with everything Sohini has said, and everyone in our club also agrees that this resolution should pass. I've lived in Urbana for two years now. I love the community, and I do see individuals in the community acting on sustainable things, doing sustainable practices. So I think they would be very happy to see us having an aggressive climate action plan. Like Sohini said, we were talking about the future when we were driving here, and there's two years that are mentioned in the resolution, 2025 and 2040, and they seem like kind of a far way from now, but we calculated it out, and I'll be 29 in 2025, and 44 in 2040. And that's, hopefully, well, these things are going to happen well within my lifetime. So put that into perspective, and I just want to reiterate that if anything that adults have been telling us our whole lives about how climate change is happening and we have to do something about it, I really want to see them take action on it, because I know when we're sitting in your desks, that we're going to be working on this, and it's going to be a priority. So give us a fighting chance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's everyone that wanted to address the council, is that right? Did anyone else want to address the council? If not, I'll read the names in support. Okay, I have Seren Gnabishis, Gnabishis, in sort of support of the Urbana Climate Inheritance Resolution, I Matter. Mona Jawad, also in support. Lily Banahashim, also in support. And Stuart Levy, also in support. Anyone else have public input? Okay. Matt Scott Tess is here to, are you going to present it, or just available for questions?
Just summarize.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a short memo. It actually describes two different pledge or resolution-type requests that have been made to the Sustainability Advisory Commission in the last few months. The first that I want to mention is the Sierra Club Mayors for 100% Clean Energy, also known as the Ready for 100 Campaign. That's an effort asking mayors to pledge a goal of 100, 100% renewable energy for the community. The mayor signed that pledge on January 11th, and so that's completed, but I've included a full text of that pledge in your packet. The second resolution, and by the way, both of these were, were supported by the Sustainability Advisory Commission. The commission approved a motion to recommend council, well, the mayor, in, in terms of the Sierra Club campaign. The commission approved a motion to recommend counsel, well, the mayor, in terms of the Sierra Club campaign to sign and counsel to approve this next resolution, which is the I Matter Youth Movement's Climate Inheritance Resolution, and that's what the folks have been talking about in public comment. The implications of that resolution are that the city would agree a goal to reach carbon, net carbon neutrality, community-wide by 2040. And also work to achieve 100% renewable energy, or sorry, renewable electricity, community-wide by 2025. It would also oblige the city to have a mechanism to incorporate youth input in establishing energy and climate goals and policies. So I'll take any questions you may have at this point.
Any questions for Scott? Yeah, Jared.
So one thing that I'm interested in, Scott, and you know, passing on, Sustainability Advisory Committee or I Matter folks, Students for Environmental Concerns folks, is that, as many of you know, I have a background in environmental science. I've studied a lot of this stuff, wrote a lot of papers on it. And one of the things that I think is, you know, good about this, but is also short-sighted, is that I think if we are to accept the reality of the fact that change is not going to happen in the manner in which we hope it will with the world, that we need to look beyond what I will call a dated idea of neutrality into sequestration. And if you really want to talk about being innovative in what cities are going to do, what communities are going to do, is that we already know that we have too much carbon dioxide in our atmosphere that at the levels, you know, even if we dead stopped today, we would have more in the atmosphere than the international, the IPCC said that we should in order to stay below the two-degree climate warming threshold. So we're already above that. And even if we stopped today, we still have more in the atmosphere than we can afford. We've already blown the budget, per se. So I would encourage students and leaders, and ourselves as well, to consider what we can do to not only work towards neutrality, but to work towards a goal of sequestration so that we are actually putting more carbon, are taking more carbon out of the atmosphere than we are putting into it. Because that's ultimately where we're going to, we have to go. So just for leaders who shared here tonight, Scott, for yourself as well, this is something I think we definitely need to consider as we move forward on how we turn this into a real, a real plan. That's my comment, thanks.
Anyone else? Mary Alice. Mary Alice.
So I know that we've had some educational events. I think we had one last September at the city building. I'm wondering if there is any outreach into the community. I'm thinking farmer's market, I mean, can we go to the places that people are rather than asking them to come to us and offer them simple solutions? Like, you know, if you're a renter, make sure you do this. Here's a checklist of things that you can do that's really easy, fast, to make an impact in our community.
Yeah, we seek opportunities for that where we can partner with others. So a great example is the electric vehicle event that one of the speakers, Scott Green, organized last year. And the mayor and I both spoke there and it was a really wonderful event. It was a car show, but it was all electric vehicle cars. And they were really captivating in their design. And the owners were really enthusiastic in letting people crawl inside and see what that was like. And also giving test drives as well. And then I think you're also referencing the educational event we did on natural lawn care practices with an eye towards our stormwater pollution control. And so that's another example. We partnered with the Midwest Pesticide Action Center. And we'll be running a third round of our Solar Urbana Champagne Program this year. And we're partnering there with the Midwest Renewable Energy Association, who will be doing something on the order of 15 or 20 solar power hours all over the county. So we always work to partner with that so we can do more work.
Okay, all right. I just think it would be helpful, as I said, to kind of go to the people. So right now, if we have events that we're asking people to come to us, if we can provide checklists and easy things that people can do in addition to looking at and trying to be creative on how we can innovate, what Jared was talking about, you had a phrase that I can't think of.
Sequestration.
Thank you, sequestration. Frankly, I'd be shocked if anybody on this council in this city would be against this resolution. I think you have the support of Urbana, but I can't speak for everybody here. With that in mind, I'd like to move that the Urbana Climate Inheritance Resolution be forwarded to the city council with recommendation for approval. There's no number on here, so.
It's on the agenda, I think. So we'll call it Resolution 2018-02-005R.
I have a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I did have a couple of questions for Scott. As far as the impact on our climate action plan, I know our current action plan has less aggressive goals. It's like 80% by 2050. And this is 100% by 2040. How does the Sustainability Advisory Committee feel about that aggressive take? And are they like hoping and praying for technical advances between now and then, basically? What's the plan?
Yeah, so the discussion at the Sustainability Advisory Commission centered around a particular choice. And the choice is, do we set big, bold, aggressive goals that we can't describe how we will meet right now? But we set them and we hope that we will all do more because we've set those goals. Or do we add up what we think we can do in a snapshot in time right now and make that our goal? In our original goals, we did the former. We set a big aggressive goal and we didn't really know all the ways that we would get there. So 80% reduction by 2050. And SAC decided to support this resolution in the same vein. It's a big aggressive goal. We don't know all the ways that we can get there. But we also can't predict future budgets and future technology change. I mean, I don't think anyone a few months ago thought that there would be an electric vehicle satellite in space. But now there is, self-driving cars, who knows? Predicting technology change is bad business. But I think that's exactly right. We wanted, that they wanted to support a big goal and do our best to reach it.
And then for the more immediate goal, just seven years away, to get to 100% electricity, we're talking about all the commercial and all the industrial electricity, getting them to somehow purchase credits to cover their usage or something?
Yeah, two, I mean, I think we can describe two fundamental ways. Businesses can make a choice to buy renewables, whether that's renewable energy credits or whether that's a lot of additional community solar projects where they can buy into a subscription for solar energy locally. The other possibility is state-level action. You know, we have this Future Energy Jobs Act, sets a lot of ambitious goals. But advocates are already moving on to, well, okay, great. Now how do we get 100% renewable energy by some target date among the entire state grid? So that would be the other way that that would happen. It's a little bit easier to describe how the city could do it because the city, of course, controls their own contracting of electric supply. But it's more challenging when you're talking about lots of individuals and their own personal choices.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, if not, Dennis.
Yeah, this is going to seem paltry perhaps, but working off of Mary Alice Wu's comments about educational outreach and events, I was just happened to check out the movie Interstellar last week and saw it. And the whole point of that movie is what happens when crop failure and blight destroys the habitat of humanity and all that's left is, you know, seeking alternative realities in space. Maybe one of the things that, you know, the Sustainable Advisory Committee could do would be to host an annual event like the Insect Fair Festival, but based on perhaps a popular film or a series of films, which people could then be encouraged to watch or come to see at perhaps a sustainability fair or something like that, that could tie in information and possible practice with a little bit of entertainment that still deals with the topic that's so important.
Sure.
Okay, Mayor Marlin.
Just wanted to add one note. The last sentence of the resolution deals with including young people in the process of creating and executing climate-related policies and actions. And I wanted to let people know, I've asked staff to go ahead and develop a mechanism for doing that. And we are looking at basically creating a new seat in the Sustainability Advisory Commission for a youth member aged 16 to 18. Of course, anybody over the age of 18 is technically an adult and are welcome to apply for a seat on the commission. But this would be a seat for high school age, one high school age student, and it would be similar to the one that we have on the Human Relations Commission. So that part's done, or will be soon.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I had a question.
Yeah, Aaron.
I wanted, Jared, in relationship to your concern or your enlightenment around this issue, was there something that you thought should be added to the resolution or something?
Probably not at this time. I mean, I think the goal is important and useful. I just believe that, you know, it's just one step and we've got to go, we've got to go beyond even what this is if we want to really be real about what's going on. Because, you know, this is the gloss over in my world of, you know, saying, oh, well, we're going to get, we're going to get here, when in reality, we're already there. And it's already too late for this particular plan. There needs to be a new and stronger plan that deals with the fact that we are over budget already in carbon. So maybe not at this time, but I think that the Sustainability Advisory Commission would behoove of themselves to think about it as we go forward and make plans for the future.
Okay. I do have some comments, so I'd like to pass the chair to Dennis first.
And would there be somebody who'd like to speak?
Bill.
Bill Brown.
Thank you. The reason we do that is in case I get carried away, he can shut me down. So that's just something we do when we have to change chairs to comment. So, you know, I think there's a lot good about this resolution. I think there's some missing. I think you've overlooked really one of our strengths, that we have been leaders as a community in energy for a long time. And our main strength is you, the students, and the university. And it was well before your time, but Nick Holynak went here, got all his degrees here. His advisor was John Bardine, inventor of superconductivity and transistors and all these energy-efficient things. Nick Holynak invented LEDs, saved millions of tons of CO2. And I think as a community, our strength that would have been nice to bring across in this resolution, I know I Matter is doing these kind of boilerplate resolutions, but they also let you change them and you have made some insertions about Urbana. But our strength is working with the university. 15 years ago, there was the Passive House Institute. I don't know if that actually came out of the university, but it was a woman and her husband from Germany, I think, came here and decided to design the passive, or they brought the passive house idea here. And here in Urbana, we had the first passive house in the US. It's a super insulated passive solar house that, you know, you could heat the whole thing all winter from a hair dryer, basically. So that still exists over in East Urbana. And we worked with that group to build two demonstration houses. This was before my time on council, but Charlie probably remembers and maybe Diane, on Fairview for low-income people that also use that same design. And now, they have since, her husband died, but her and Mike Kerner, Kerner, I forget his last name, the construction guy went to Chicago and they created the Passive House US. They've done over 1,200 units, over a million square feet of certified housing in the US. So I think our strength is really to work with kind of homegrown, you know, harvest your enthusiasm, spread it among the students, the technical people, the people that need to figure out how we're going to live socially for the next 50 years, changing our habits and things like that, and come up with solutions that we can export to the world. And we get some of the best and brightest people from the state, the country, all around the world here, and that's our strength. So I would have liked to see something like that in the resolution. Because I don't think that, and you know, comparing us to St. Louis Park, we're about the same size, but that's about where the comparison ends. St. Louis Park is a suburb of Minneapolis. Their per capita income is about double ours. So they could probably afford to come up with some of the money that's needed to buy renewable energy credits a little bit easier than we could. And one of the reasons that we struggle with finances is because we're so supportive of the university, which has a lot of property that's not taxable and other organizations that have property in town that's not taxable. And if we were all about trying to increase property values, then West Urbana wouldn't exist as is. You wouldn't have this nice neighborhood where professors enjoy coming here to live, where they can ride their bike to work. As somebody, there was a newspaper article last weekend, one of the reasons a professor chose to live here was because he could have a house and ride his bike to work. We provide that kind of community that we hope we can attract those kind of people. If we were all about increasing property values, that would all be high-rise student apartments and not a nice community that where professors could live. So I think we're supportive, I think we are leaders and we'd like to continue to be. I don't have a problem with passing this resolution. I just would have liked to see a little bit more, I think. Okay, I'm off my soapbox.
I surrender the chair back to Bill Brown.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That much then carries. Thank you all very much. So that will be forwarded, that was to, just for clarification, that was to forward that resolution to city council for final approval next week. Thanks. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2018-02-006R, a resolution approving modifications to the City of Urbana Community Development Target Area. Community Development, Matt.
Hello, everyone. So as the name implies, this resolution will make modifications to the geographic extent of the CD target area and bring it into conformity with updated data from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The existing CD target area is a contiguous area of Urbana made up of block groups that are comprised of at least 51% low-mod income residents. And the CD target area as it exists now was created through the 2000 census data. In 2014, HUD announced that municipalities that receive community development block grant funds must use American Community Survey data, ACS data, as an updated version. And when we looked at that data, we realized that two parts of the existing target area were no longer eligible, one of which was Census Track 56, Block Group 1, the Lehrman Neighborhood, the other being Census Track 55, Block Group 4. There were also a number of block groups that were added through this data, and I'll get to that a little bit later. All of the changes are reflected in the packet and the maps at the back. Due to the relatively high percentage of low-mod income residents in Census Track 56, Block Group 1, in the Lehrman Neighborhood, as well as infrastructure projects and also the advocacy of Lehrman Neighborhood residents and the Lehrman Neighborhood Action Committee, city staff undertook about a year ago an income survey in the Lehrman Neighborhood. city staff undertook about a year ago an income survey in the Lehrman Neighborhood, and we created our own data using a HUD-approved methodology, and we've completed the income survey and certified it as eligible for infrastructure and neighborhood cleanup activities. So it is now included in the proposed modifications, even though never technically was taken out, we have certified it as eligible, and it is proposed to be included within the updated target area. As I mentioned, now, under the proposed modifications, only Census Track 55, Block Group Four will be, is proposed to be taken out of the target area. While three block groups in South Urbana are proposed to be added, they are qualified under the American Community Survey. That's Block Group Two of Census Track 57.01, Block Groups Three and Four of Census Track 56. The proposed revisions would result in a net 17% increase in the number of properties in the CD target area, bringing it up to 3699 properties. Programmatically, the modifications would allow for infrastructure improvements in Census Track 56, Block Group One. Those two infrastructure improvements in the Lehrman Neighborhood are very important, and they were first mentioned in the 2014 Capital Improvements Plan, but because they were ineligible due to too low of a percentage of low-mod income residents, they've been on, sort of on hold until we complete the income survey. Now that the income survey is completed, we can undertake those projects. Also, the modifications better align resources to residents in South Urbana that would now be considered eligible for the CD target area. Terms of fiscal impacts, amending the CD target area could have impacts on the City General Fund, as general funds are used to cover the balance of neighborhood cleanup For example, about $4,300 were used in the neighborhood cleanup activity done in May of 2017. Staff recommends that the Committee of Hold Review the resolution, make a recommendation for approval to the Urbana City Council. The Community Development Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval at its regular meeting on January 23, 2018, and I am ready for any questions that may have. And Kelly Mirkowski is here as well to offer thoughts if needed.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Dennis?
Yeah, first of all, I know of the, I know personally, of the effort that it took to reevaluate and resurvey the Lehrman, the Greater Lehrman Neighborhood area. I know it took several weekends of work during a period of a couple of months, actually about probably seven minutes or something like that, ultimately it turned out. So congratulations on pulling those people back in. Probably, the question had come up because population there has changed a lot. I mean, after all, a lot of the units either be, had either been demolished or are vacant, you know, so the population shift was part of that. My guess, my question for you is, so part of the historic Eastern Bana, yeah, historic Eastern Bana Neighborhood, HUNA, fell out. It was the eastern half, and they seem to have a kind of surprisingly low LMI average. Do you think that it's going to be worth trying to reassess that by an independent survey in the coming years? Because it kind of leaves a donut hole, and it kind of breaks the services to the Eastern Bana neighborhoods, kind of, it breaks it in half. So it's kind of awkward. Should I be happy that they're so well off, or should I be concerned that they're not receiving due justice?
I do think that HUD will be, they intend to release new data, I think they said every seven or eight years, and I would expect new data to come out probably in three or four years. So it may be, it may be worthwhile to wait until that occurs. We may also, we may want to consider a survey. I'm somewhat hesitant about that, just because 37% is fairly low. With the Lehrman Neighborhood, it was at 47%.
Right.
And, I mean, we had anecdotal information, and through the advocacy of the Lehrman Neighborhood, we really thought that was something that we had to go for. And I think, you know, there are certainly people in Historic Eastern Bana who could make use of this, but putting in the staff time and to be able to do an income survey, it's something I would be glad to talk about, but I would be hesitant to do that just because of the low LMI and the possibility that even after getting a statistically significant number of responses, we may still not get over the 51% threshold.
Sure, okay. I kind of imagine that would be how you'd have to deal with it, but in the future, we're hoping perhaps to either re-nit that reality or perhaps see other neighborhoods have higher general income values to give them the independence to not have to be supported by the other kinds of federal funding that's available. But I know it's helped, the CDPG grants have helped several projects in the historic eastern neighborhood. Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
I have one. I noticed that you said the data from the 2006 to 2010 ACS had to be used. That was prescribed by HUD or something?
Yes, that is required by HUD that we use that data. That's the most recent that they have available.
I mean, there's been six more years of five-year surveys since then, but that's the most recent they have available.
It is. They actually, HUD takes the data from the U.S. Census Bureau, and they do their own analysis on top of that. They sort of clean the data, and I'm not exactly sure what they do, but then they release it to their subrecipient, or their recipient entities, us and other municipalities that receive CDPG funds, and that's the data that we have to work with, and, you know, we're just basically waiting for the next iteration of when that comes out.
Okay. And then, if you're taking requests for projects, Anderson is now in the target zone, and it's a bike route and needs streetlights.
Well, yeah, we'll definitely take note of that.
We'll make a note of that.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to send Resolution 2018-02-006R, a resolution approving modifications to the City of Urbana Community Development Target Area to City Council with approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution Number 2018-02-007R, a resolution approving an amendment to Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, Habitat for Humanity, FY 2017-2018. Matt.
So this resolution would adjust the subrecipient agreement that the Urbana Home Consortium provided with, to Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County through our recent request for proposals for home funds. Under that agreement, the Urbana Home Consortium committed $150,000 from the City of Champaign's allocation of home funds to assist Habitat through partially subsidizing four new homeownership units. Two of those units have been identified and were identified through the agreement, and that's 1206 West Church Street and 1204 West Church Street in Urbana. Those units have been completed and sold to income-eligible buyers. It's, the subject of this amendment is the two remaining properties. One of those was originally, in the original agreement, was slated to be 610 Phillips Drive in Champaign, but as that rehab project was finished and the buyer was moving in, we, as the Urbana Home Consortium were required to record a land use restriction agreement due to federal regulations, and the mortgage lender for that property did not agree with our, the restrictions that we were going to put on the property. So we did not, Habitat did not seek reimbursement for the property and instead requested to replace it with one other property in Urbana, 1404 West Bezlin Street, and the final slot was considered to be determined under the original agreement, and Habitat has requested that the property right next door at 1406 West Bezlin Street be considered the final property to go into this agreement, which would put all four properties in Urbana. The two projects on Bezlin, the foundations have been completed, and construction is expected to begin this spring. The home at 1404 Bezlin is the, it will be, the 50th home, 50th Habitat home built in Urbana, so that's definitely a significant milestone for us. In terms of fiscal impacts, there is no effect on the City General Fund or the home funds, as the subject of the amendment is simply the geographic location of the two remaining projects. And programmatically, affordable homeownership opportunities are a major priority through the city's consolidated plan. That in mind, staff recommends approval of the proposed resolution. Community Development Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval at its January 23 regular meeting, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and so would Sheila Dodd, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity for Champaign County.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Matt or Sheila? Jared?
I don't have a question, as I feel like this is pretty straightforward, but I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move Resolution Number 2018-02-007R, a resolution approving an amendment to Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement for Habitat for Humanity for the fiscal year of 2017-2018 forward to the full council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Oh, Dennis?
Yeah, this is tangential. Is that the word, tangential? I don't know what it is. But having just discussed changes in the target areas for the community, I'm thinking of one or two lots in Eastern Bana which now are no longer covered by CDGB benefit of funding. Would it affect, in a way, whether those lots could be accessed by Habitat for Humanity to build a new structure on a lot that's been demolished?
No, and that's, I, it's, I'm glad you brought this up. This is an important thing to discuss about the target area. The target area really only, it only deals with the neighborhood cleanup events and public facilities and infrastructure development. If we find that a property is either, if it's a vacant lot, then Habitat could move in and take possession of it, and we could assist that with home funds. The target area has no impact on that. It's, yeah, it's really just the infrastructure, the neighborhood cleanup, and also that homeowners in the target area can, they're eligible for whole-house rehabilitation without having to go through the CDC. It may have an impact when it comes to demolishing properties, blighted and abandoned properties, and then replacing them with housing, but we can now do that through our slum blight reduction activity that we have through our recent amendments to the Housing Program Manual, so even that shouldn't be an issue if there are a couple of lots that you think could be subject to that and would be good for homeownership opportunities.
Sure, okay, great. Thanks, appreciate that clarification.
Thank you. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have Ordinance Number 2018-02-008, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1301 East Washington Street, to R. Rentals Series LLC. Brandon Boies.
Good evening. The proposed ordinance before council would authorize the sale 1301 East Washington to R. Rentals, Mike Hosier, at a price of $100,000. R. Rentals intends to fully demolish the structures on the property within 90 days of closing and to construct a new building that's suitable for multiple neighborhood-oriented business tenants. The city originally accepted donation of this property back in 2008. In 2017, the City Council approved the sale of this property to the Overland Group, which is a preferred developer of Dollar General stores. However, that buyer terminated the purchase agreement during their due diligence period. A notice was published in the News Gazette on January 26 for the public hearing that was held earlier this evening. The property was initially listed for sale in 2016 at a price of $270,000 with the city's commercial broker, Coldwell Banker, Devonshire Realty. In 2017, the listing price was reduced to $165,000. In August of 2017, that was when the city entered into the purchase agreement with the Overland Group with a price of $160,000, and that agreement obligated the buyer to demolish the property within 120 days of purchase. The current proposal with R. Rentals is for a price of $100,000 and a commitment to demolish the building within 90 days. There were three other prospective buyers that expressed interest in the property, most recently. This proposed purchase agreement also provides for 120-day due diligence period. That's, I believe, the same as what was offered the Overland Group. R. Rentals currently owns and manages 15 properties in Champaign and four properties in downtown Urbana, all commercial. Current Urbana tenants for R. Rentals includes Crane Alley, Applied Pavement Technology, which is a corporate office located above Crane Alley, Blackbird, Colider Cowork, CU Adventures in Time and Space, CU CD and Vinyl, The Best of Africa Grocery Store, and Habitat for Humanity. R. Rentals is currently working with 25 O'Clock Brewing and Pizza M to establish a new retail presence at 208 West Greg Street. In addition, CU Adventures in Time and Space has signed a lease with R. Rentals to expand at, what is the, the former Gill Building located at 401 North Vine Street. Again, at 1301 East Washington, R. Rentals plans to construct a new building on the property. This construction sees in for multiple neighborhood-oriented tenants, and staff can confirm that R. Rentals is currently in communication with multiple locally-owned businesses that have expressed an interest in the site. The proposed project is consistent with the city's B3 zoning for general business and its community business designation in the 2005 comp plan. This proposed agreement would allow for sale of the property, again, at a price of $100,000. The city's real estate broker would be paid a 7% commission, so that's a $7,000 payment. The city would also incur up to $1,300 in title and closing costs. All proceeds thereafter would be accrued to the city's general fund, so roughly in the amount of $91,700. The property is located in the Urbana Enterprise Zone, and the new construction project at the site would be anticipated to receive both Enterprise Zone sales tax exemption certificates and property tax abatements. The completed project, when fully assessed and taxed, would generate roughly $17,000 annually in new property taxes, 2,000 of which would be collected by the city. Staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance and attached agreement, and I'd gladly take any questions council might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandon? If not, is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to do that. I'd like to forward ordinance, or, let's see. I want to, I want to, to move, make a motion to move Ordinance Number 2018-02-008, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate at 1301 East Washington Street, R. Rentals Series LLC, forward to the City Council with approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next is Ordinance Number 20- Next is ordinance number 2018-02-009, an ordinance approving an agreement with Downtown Creations LLC for light, site lighting improvements installation at 111 West Main Street. Public Works, Brad.
Thank you. I appreciate being before you this evening. I'll kind of keep it short and simple. What you have before you is a license agreement. It's for the Blackbird Restaurant on Main Street. They have a outdoor seating area kind of back behind the building in a, in an alleyway or adjacent to an alleyway. In putting up some site lighting improvements, they strung lighting cables across the alley, and they're anchored into the city parking deck. And because that, they're attached to the parking deck, we have to do a license agreement with them. There is no cost to the city for this agreement. In fact, we'll collect $94 annually in fees for having the, the lights attached to our city parking deck. And that's pretty much it. I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions for Brad? Jared?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move ordinance number 2018-02-009, an ordinance approving an agreement with Downtown Creations LLC for site lighting improvements installation at 111 West Main Street, forward to the full council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Questions, sir, so I will second that.
Give it to Dean.
Okay, I'll give, give that one to Dean. Okay, so it says, motion, motion by Miller, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have two ordinances dealing with the possibility of a pedal bus operation. The first one doesn't involve liquor fees, so I think Jared's safe on that one. The second one does, so we may, did you want to split the second one?
So after consulting with the city attorney, the material's kind of being presented in Exhibit A, B, and C formats. Exhibit C, I am okay to talk about. Exhibit A and B, I am, or Exhibit B, I am not. Correct, Jim? Is that right?
The, the one dealing with the license.
Oh, A is the, A is the license. So B and C I can, but they're split up amongst the ordinances where C actually is pertaining to the first ordinance and A and B pertain to the second ordinance. So due to not trying to create conflicts of interest for myself, council would respect discussion to be limited, even though they're going to talk about all three parts at the same time, to Exhibit C during the first motion, and I'm going to make a motion after we pass that ordinance to split the second ordinance into the Exhibit A and the Exhibit B sections for discussion so I can participate in the one that I can and the other one I will not be able to.
That seems perfectly clear. Any questions?
No, no confusion with that, right, guys?
Okay. So this is, let me read the, it's ordinance number 2018-02-010, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 1, Section 1-18, and Chapter 14, Section 14-7, Pedal Bus Fines and Fees, presented by Beth.
This just has to do with fees and fines, so they, they can. This group of ordinances basically came about at the request of one or both pedal buses that apparently are plying Champaign streets. They would like to do the same on our streets. I believe the, the main part of the ordinance, the pedal bus ordinance part itself, is probably about 98, 99% equivalent to Champaign's ordinance, or maybe a little bit different structure in the section numbering and all. The liquor license part of the ordinance, we do not have a liquor license that allows service or if service of alcoholic beverages on pedal buses. And then the other part of the ordinance are the fees.
Any questions, or, any questions for Jim or Beth? Dennis?
I've got two questions that relate to the bus and its route. So can I handle those appropriately at this time?
Yeah.
Okay. Not about the liquor license. Okay, I think it's a really interesting idea. I've seen them here and there, you know, in other cities and not too far away, across There were just a couple of things I had concern about, and then maybe I'd like to open this up for kind of discussion. I guess I want the opinion of council about allowing a pedal bus on a very busy major street called University. It looks like the, the, oh, wait, there are restricted streets, and I'm reading the map backwards. So University is a restricted street.
Yes.
Okay, so that question, I thought, I thought that was maybe the boundary of which the pedal bus could operate. Well, it can go up and down certain streets, but apparently they can't get onto the major streets. Okay, thank you.
They can cross certain major streets at intersections.
That are.
Such as Lincoln Avenue. If they have to cross Lincoln Avenue, let's say, on Green Street.
Because I assume that they're not going to go as fast as most cars, and there needs to be signaling or something to allow them to safely pass, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The red, I believe it's probably the same color on your memo, the red are the restricted streets. They're not allowed to ply up and down those streets, merely cross them. University is not a street they would cross because they, you know, going north, they can't go anywhere.
Nor they could, nor could they go down it.
Right. North is out of bounds for the pedal buses and as is Vine Street.
Okay. Thanks. That's, I have two other things. There are, Section 26-172, pedal bus markings, similar markings prohibited. I'm fine with them having the name of the business on the bus, but are we going to allow advertising signs to be on the bus as well? I would suggest that we don't, that we follow the same, well, I guess we're not going to follow the same anything, but I would say that, I would follow the same prohibition that we have on the curbanas, which are stationary places for entertainment in the downtown. But we don't regulate apparently signage on these buses?
In this ordinance, I don't believe we regulate signage. I don't know what Champaign is doing about signage.
I mean, there could be a billboard on this bus.
But I've never looked at them.
There could be a billboard on this bus, and that would be advertising, and I think that we should regulate it or not allow it.
We can certainly draw some.
It depends on how you want to regulate it. You can't regulate it by content because that's regulation of speech, which is prohibited under Reed versus Towne &amp; Gilbert, which is the U.S. Supreme Court decision.
Gotcha. But so far, we're not allowing it because all we can allow, all that is allowed is the name of the pedal bus as approved by the finance director, and the lettering has to be three inches high. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's just to identify who, who the business is, if passengers, you know, were getting back on the bus, and perhaps they've forgotten which bus they got off of.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to spot this bus, but yes.
Right.
Now, the problem with advertising is if Champaign allows it, and right now, this section of the ordinance doesn't prohibit advertising. It merely, as Beth indicated, deals with markings to distinguish between who owns pedal buses. I believe we have the same situation for taxicabs vehicles for hire. I don't know if these advertisements that might appear on the ones in Champaign, assuming they do advertise, whether they are removable. And I doubt the pedal bus companies are going to buy separate vehicles, separate pedal bus equipment, just to operate in Urbana. We tried to keep this ordinance as consistent with Champaign, except for obviously the area that they can ply, as consistent with Champaign as possible.
So Champaign does allow advertising on their pedal buses?
I can't remember what they look like. I think I've saw, seen them once or twice.
Someone's here from one of the pedal bus companies, perhaps?
Yeah, I'm Rodney Roberts. I have heart under the Slow Ride Pedal Force.
Maybe you want to come up and speak then, so we can all hear your comments.
The Champaign pedal bus, they, they did allow us to have advertising. We are a business, and that is part of our income. We have magnets that we put on the pedal bus. They are removable. It depends on how long the advertisers are advertising. We go by month by month.
And what is the size of the magnetic advertisement?
We are, we're limited on size. We have just a running board, and I don't recall, I think it's like 100 inches long
Okay.
By six inches high. And then we have the back seat, which is about two feet by six inches high.
All right.
And then there's this back panel, but we're not even going to sell that this year. So it's only those two spots.
Well, okay. That doesn't super offend me, and I just want to know, though, whether, how we cover this in our ordinance? So I'd like to hear if you're, you know, are you open to adding definition about advertising signage?
I think at this time, I don't think we're restricting that. The ordinance isn't restricting the advertisement.
Okay. Could I have, and I want, so I think perhaps you've, I'm not offended by, I guess, the answer, so I'll let anybody else talk about it who wants to. I have one more point. And this is sort of indirectly related to the liquor license, so I don't know if I should ask that later or not.
If you're going, if there is a motion, right now, as I recall, there's no motion to bifurcate this proceeding. So by discussing the, anything to do with the liquor license, you will be excluding, Councilman Miller will have to refuse himself from the whole discussion.
Oh, so I should, I should hold this one?
Hold the liquor license question.
To honor Jared, I will. Mary Alice?
So I'm glad you're here because I have some questions in terms of the operations and how this all works. I've personally never been on one, but I've seen them. My daughter lives in Minneapolis. There's a lot in Minneapolis. So, question number one. How many employees generally are on the bike at a time?
Two. We have a driver and a server.
Okay.
They have two. Another company just has one. That is the driver, and when they stop, they become the server.
So they have to stop in order to pour?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, so we have something in here that only plastic foam or paper cups will be used. No glassware of any kind is allowed on the pedal bus. My question is with bottles of items that you're pouring.
That is an issue that, that's probably right out of the Champaign ordinance. It was discussed at their council meeting when they, they allowed this, that, that glass could be brought onboard. However, the server is responsible for serving that. The patrons cannot, they have to use plastic cups. So all the glassware is in behind the bar where our train servers will pour that drink for the customer. But it never got into the ordinance itself. They're working on amending that, that ordinance in Champaign. There is, there was discussion among their council members that said, how do you bring a bottle of wine? You know, that's going to be very difficult for them to put it in a plastic container or something.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm wondering. Because you will have, you will have glass on.
There will, we have glass on it now. We've been running for the last two years with glass. We have a speed bar behind the rail or behind the bar where we have that, so it's safely put away.
But right now, we have nothing in our ordinance that dictates that, correct?
No. But it was my understanding that the glassware that is behind where the server is serving is allowed.
Yes.
But it says here.
It says no glassware, but that's for, as our guest has indicated, the owner of the company has indicated, patrons, riders can bring a bottle of wine, for instance, or a bottle of beer, whatever it is. They turn that over to the company's server that puts it in the bar area. The patron does not pour his or her own glass of wine or beer. When they leave, now, this is not addressed by the ordinance, but when they leave, if they have a half bottle of wine left, I take it you turn that back over to the patron?
We have, I don't know what they call them, their plastic.
The bags, the sealed bags. We have not provided that in the ordinance, and that we can provide in the ordinance for next week when it comes up. If that is a concern, we can also flesh out, we can also flesh out the requirement that the riders, the passengers on the bus, are not to pour their own liquor, that the glass containers of liquor are turned over upon initial boarding of the bus to the server.
So I think it would be helpful if we included some kind of language that talked about how the glass, well, adding in the fact that it would be the employees who would be pouring it, they wouldn't be carrying it with, they'll have to turn it over, but also just, you know, an area, and I, I don't know exactly how to write that, I'll leave that up to you guys, but it would be good to know. You're not going to have glass bottles sitting up here as you drive down, right? I mean, so they have to be behind something. So have something in the ordinance that says where those glass bottles are going to be. Sounds like you're having a procedure in place, but it'd be good just so that everybody does, whoever comes in.
I think we'll have to ask our company representative how they describe that area. If you could send that to Beth in finance, just so we, we can use comparable language that you understand.
And then my, I have two more questions, I promise. So lighting, I, I don't know who this is appropriate for, but do we have any regulations in terms of bicycle-style vehicles and lighting?
I, I don't think I understood the full question. Are you asking whether the, the buses?
Well, on cars, right? We have, you know, you have to have lights for stopping, and I'm, I'm just worried at night. I think most of the time, these.
So in equipment, it does, they are required to have headlights, taillights, both front and rear turn signals.
Yeah, they're, they are, in essence, treated like normal vehicles as opposed to bicycles on the public street. So they do have lighting.
Okay. And then last but not least, I'd like to add my support in terms of what Dennis would like in terms of advertising, at least have it consistent with the city of Champaign and how they've phrased it and the size. So having that added in for next week. All right, those are my questions.
Anyone else? Dennis? Oh. Go ahead.
All right. So you tread in the area that I thought I wasn't going to go to, but you took, you're right in the very same line that I'm interested in?
I think she was talking about sparkling grape juice in, in bottles.
There you go.
Because we're still discussing with Jared.
Right. So in the same line, it's talking about plastic foam or paper cups or no glassware. You mentioned the glassware. So I'm going to ask about the foam cups. I would like to see a prohibition against foam cups. I think that would help us reduce the carbon footprint in our community, and to my understanding, foam cups are not recyclable. Why would we want them to be used in our community? I think it would be part of our goals to allow that, and you're not serving hot beverages, I don't think.
They, they do. You could actually do like a morning breakfast meeting with coffee and donuts.
Oh.
No alcohol. I mean, it doesn't have to involve alcohol.
It would be, it'd be like a vegan drinking bar? Something like that?
Could be. It could be what, yeah.
All right.
We don't use foam cups, by the way. We have plastic cups, recycle, we actually.
For coffee or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then you get, you know, okay, that's a plus. That, that secures my interest in a deeper sense because we just talked about reducing our carbon footprint, and why would we want to be acquiring litter that was be unrecyclable? So thank you so much.
Jared?
So I just wanted to make one comment to council as a patron of a bus ride, and having seen them lots and lots and lots in downtown Champaign as a DJ and various other nightlife activities. I don't think I've ever actually seen a sign on one of them. I, I understand that they're on there, but you don't, you don't look at the signs. You look at the, the people who are riding and having a good time. Yeah, they're, they're the entertainment. That's where my eyes always drawn. I, I don't think that I've ever looked at, or even noticed that there were signs on the back of the seats or around the bar or anywhere else on them. I think there's a lot of other viable distraction when people are riding. But anyway, that was just my thought.
Mayor Marlin?
Just wanted to let you know, I was on one of these things at 6:30 in the morning drinking coffee and eating bagels. So yes, you can. And they're a lot of fun, actually.
I had a couple of questions. One was on operating hours. A lot of the permitted streets go through neighborhoods. There doesn't seem to be any shut-off time. What time, how late do you operate now?
We run five tours a day, except on Sunday, and we run three tours. We want to make sure everybody's safe and. We want to make sure everybody's safe and everybody home. Our last tour is at eight o'clock, and our tours run two hours.
So it could be going to 10?
No, I'm sorry, it's, our last tour ends at eight o'clock, actually, so.
And to, to regulate the possibility of other companies going till 11 or 12 at night, and having 15 people go by your house, even in conversational mode, is enough to wake you up in the summertime with your windows open. Would council be interested in putting some kind of time restriction? Dennis?
Yeah, I think that would, it's reasonable. What you were saying, what we're learning is that we're on the honor principle here about times, or are we actually have a scheduled time limit here?
We're not restricting time, other than it would be what, a 2:00 AM cutoff?
All right. So I'd make a recommendation that we have, that we limit the, the last ride termination at either eight or nine o'clock at night. Jared?
So I think perhaps that's a bit extreme, and rather than eliminating all, perhaps we can look at having two maps, one for pre-nine o'clock and one for after nine o'clock, where we restrict the routes, you know, closer to downtown Urbana, where that kind of noises, you know, if you live by downtown Urbana, you expect that nightlife will happen, that, you know, there's a reasonable expectation for noise in there, and maybe we split a map for daily use up until 9:00 PM, and then after nine o'clock, we'll use a second, a second map of where the routes can go, somewhere closer where, you know, traffic is higher, where expectation for noise is higher.
Another two maps, or, you know, even a map within the core, and make it a different color for the different operating.
Either way, I mean, just a differentiation based on time. I don't think they should be cut off, I mean, at, at eight or nine o'clock, but perhaps just restricted in where they can go.
Dean?
I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, but does Champagne have a time restriction thing?
No, they do not, other than the 2:00 AM for alcohol, so.
And do they have a map with residential, a square map like this, covering residential streets, or do they have specific streets where they can drive?
They have the specific streets. Staff thought a map was a little better for if there were changes. It could be updated, posted, handed out, given. It's my understanding, though, when I was speaking with Champagne, that one of the pedal, well, maybe both, the longer hours is really happening in the campus district, and then perhaps a bit downtown, but more so on campus.
So if they don't have the time restriction, I'd be curious if they've had complaints and how it's going, and if they have not, I think my suggestion might be that we just see how it goes, and if it becomes a problem, then we address it then.
I did ask the city manager's office what complaints they've received, since they've licensed pedal buses, and the only complaints that they could recall were the slow-moving traffic.
And then another question on the IMCOR segment, the, the Green Street. I know that's going to have a raised bike lane through part of that, and bike lanes marked, I think, through the rest of it. When the pedal bus is going down the street, do they drive in the bike lane or in the traffic lane completely?
But they, they're street legal, so they're on the street.
And what, what speed, what's the average speed?
Depending on how fast you pedal, maybe four miles an hour.
So there's going to be bicycles passing you on the right, then?
Most likely, yeah.
Has Public Works or Traffic Commission looked at the possibility, any conflicts on, with the IMCOR project and pedal buses? It sounds like they're slow.
They are slow.
Guess that's all my questions. Anybody else want to have questions on this part? Comments?
Just go ahead, Mary Alice.
Mary Alice?
I, I guess, I think that it's a good idea to have, I like the idea of having, call it, color-coded map, where you can have items that go up to 2:00 AM, having the, the downtown and having, having campus area with the thoroughfare of Green Street seems to me to make the most sense. I think that we will get a lot of complaints of people who, if, I, actually, I can't see you guys doing anything, where you'd be going into the neighborhoods, it's kind of dark. I can't see that, but, I mean, we have to be realistic, you're not going to be the only people who are going to be doing this. So just setting the stage in terms of expectations. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I think for the most part, it's not going to infringe on anybody's current business practices, but that's my opinion.
We mostly stay in, just like the downtown areas, and we seldom go into any kind of neighborhoods, unless we're trying to get from point A to point B. Like, when we go from downtown to campus town, we may go through, most of it's, it's business district, so. People don't want to go into neighborhoods, they want to go to the bar district.
Right, right, right. And it looks to me like you can't be on Springfield or Illinois, so Illinois is kind of curious to me. They can be on Green Street, but not Illinois. Is there a reason for that?
Fire, fire lane.
It's fire lane, ah, okay, good reason. Okay.
No one more?
Dennis?
Okay, so, of course, there is a, a large section of Green Street that is residential before it hits Lincoln, and so I, I'm wondering about that. But I also am looking at Gregory's Drive and the campus area near Gregory Place 1 and 2, and I'm wondering if that's an intended center for, for future pedal bus activity beyond the downtown of Urbana.
Well, when I sat down to talk with both pedal bus owners, it's just not the nightlife with, you know, the bar, it's tours, it's campus tours.
I see.
In Urbana, you know, there's talk of doing historical tours. I'm not sure if they have done that in Champagne or not.
Not yet.
So, the night, it's my understanding that the nighttime activity late into the evening is really in the downtown or the campus districts. It's not on these, it's not in these areas.
One of the things that makes the pedal bus really fun is you, people cheer you on, so they want to be out where there's a lot of people. So going through a neighborhood is not going to be nearly as much fun to you.
Well, I, well, I would appreciate perhaps that the pedal bus would consider tours of the, the Joseph Royer Arts and Architectural District and the 15 or 19 sites that are along that, some of which are marked.
We, we've been trying to get some, a historical tour of Champagne put together for the last couple of years, and we're hoping to do, be able to do that this year, so certainly, that's certainly.
Well, there's already a brochure and a map of the potential route that one could take with a pedal bus through that Arts and Architectural District downtown.
We'd be open to it.
Very good.
You might even be able to get Dennis to narrate it or something.
That's, that's very possible, given, given the right moment of time, yes. But to see that acti, that, that district could become a little bit more lively.
Okay, so, let's see, did we have a motion on this? We, I don't think we had a motion on this first part yet.
I'll make a motion for ordinance number 2018-02-010, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 1, Section 1-18, and Chapter 14, Section 14-7, on pedal bus fines and fees, be forwarded to the full council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion?
I had a question.
Mary Alice?
So, I'm curious, are we voting on it as is, or are we voting on it with the suggestions that we made to?
Well, I'm not sure which one.
This is just the fees and the fines.
This is just the fees and fines.
This is just the fees and fines.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, got it.
To change the operation, so it'll be the next one.
Okay, okay. I'm good, thanks.
Okay, everybody okay with the fees and fines voting on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next is ordinance number 2018-02-011, and ordinance amending City Code Chapters 3 and 26, pedal bus operating and liquor licenses. Jared?
So I'd like to make a motion that we split the question into two, for this ordinance, one pertaining to Chapter 26 for operation, and one pertaining to Chapter 3 for liquor licenses, and we'll vote on them separately.
It's been moved to divide the questions, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, the question is divided, so now we will talk about one of them. Which one was liquor? Chapter 3?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's talk about 26 first, Chapter 26, pedal bus operating.
Yeah, so it's basically what we've been discussing these last, I don't know, 20 minutes.
So, did you have anything to add to?
Uh, no, I mean, it, both pedal bus companies, they've sat down and met with the mayor. I sat down and met with both pedal bus companies and staff from executive legal, finance, fire, police, Public Works. We met on two separate occasions, and, you know, came up with this map for area of operation in both ordinances, and I can say it, it would be an exciting opportunity for residents and for visitors in Urbana to have this attraction in town, and it's not a big fiscal impact, it's, you know, small, but I think it would definitely attract people to the downtown, to maybe unique ideas for business meetings, tours. I see it as a real positive.
Going into this ordinance, the only thing I would recommend is trying to keep it as consistent with Champagne as possible, because when we start diverging, and we've consulted with Champagne, the original draft was modeled on their draft ordinance, and as we diverge from what they're doing, I would imagine that it tends to be a little more onerous on the pedal bus companies, and we certainly want that, I would think we would want that activity, because it's an interesting, exciting, different kind of opportunity for residents and visitors and students and everyone else in which to engage. And we, I'm not sure it makes much sense, and I'm not sure that much is gained by any great divergence. We can amend this thing if we have problems, we can address some of the issues and see where it goes. The issues we probably will experience, my guess would be the same issues that Champagne would experience, and one of us will end up taking the lead on problem-solving.
Any more questions? Is there a motion? Jared?
Charlie had raised his, his hand earlier, and I was just questioning what you were, what you were going to mention, as far as.
Mary Alice asked the question. I just wanted to make sure I was tracking everything.
Okay. I appreciate city attorney's comments. I would still support amending the Chapter 26 amendment to include restrictions after nine o'clock towards downtown areas. Not that I don't think that it's common sense that it happens that way, but I do, I do support that particular part. I don't think I would support any restriction on advertising signage size or limitations, and I would also support the glassware thing if that's minimal to everyone else on council, although I don't think, again, we're in the same common sense ground of, I think they're going to treat it safely, but if it's necessary to put it in there, I would still support it, so.
Okay, so, and in campus town, so would it be better to say downtown, only downtown areas after nine o'clock, or not other, or not other areas after nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Any ideas? Mary Alice?
I think it makes sense, as long as we're okay with the Green Street, to have campus and downtown, but go in the between on Green Street, since they can't use Illinois. I know Dennis raised a concern about the residents on Green Street, but I think there's quite a bit of traffic on Green Street currently with buses and so forth. It's the main bus route.
But not party vehicles, drinking and enjoying.
Not, not party vehicles, that's true, but there is something in here about noise, about music and so forth. Those are my thoughts.
Well, it's not my ward.
It's not mine either, it's Eric's.
West of Lincoln, west of, west of Race Street. Well, I own one block of it, I guess. I don't own it, but I serve one block of it.
Yeah, I would support that, Mary Alice. Downtown and a pathway to Campus Town, and then Campus Town.
So maybe something like exclude, this, this map excluding residential areas south of High Street after nine o'clock? Would that capture it? Or south of Green Street?
Well, I'm just thinking, if, if it's south of High Street, technically Illinois and Oregon and West Nevada, and the campus area is south of that, I mean, High doesn't go all the way through.
Oh, it's, yeah, east of Lincoln, south of Green. Restrict that area after nine o'clock.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does staff understand that one?
Uh, exclude south of High Street after nine?
Well, High Street, south, and east of Lincoln.
And east of Lincoln.
Um, just restrict that area after nine o'clock.
Bill, can I make a comment?
Yeah, Dean.
I guess I just wanted to remind everybody that apparently Champagne's not getting complaints about it. It's to their benefit to not get complaints about it. It's their benefit to self-regulate. I think they have common sense, and it just seems to me like we're putting restrictions on something that hasn't become a problem yet. It hasn't become a problem in Champagne. I think we could easily do this later if it does become a problem and we get complaints. It just seems a little premature to me to set it up that way from the beginning, but that's just my opinion, so.
Anyone else? Aaron?
I had a question. What time do you normally shut down?
It's like, I think I said, the last tour was at 10. I think it's, we, we run a, if from eight, I think it's eight to 10, and 10 we shut down, so.
And each, each tour lasts?
Two hours. Ours, our bus goes two hours. The other one, I don't know. They're an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
So you shut down at 10, or your last tour begins at 10?
It shuts down at 10. Our last tour is the eight, eight o'clock tour that goes two hours.
10 o'clock is two?
10 o'clock.
I mean, what's nine, 10?
It's like my first drink at 10 o'clock.
I'd be happy to start with 10. I mean, and, and I understand Dean's point, I think I heard, did I hear correctly, that Champagne does not have any residential areas? Generally speaking, they don't have any residential areas in there?
We, we can go on, if I remember the boundaries, I'm in the marketing side, so I'm not in the operations side on it, but we have, can go all the way out past like West Side Park, where that is residential, although, to be honest, we don't go out there very much, because there's not very many people there. We like, they want to be around where there's a concentration of people in the downtown area. So, but we have gone out there, but it's not very common. So, and it's a street that's under 35 miles an hour, so that we can go on this street.
And really, I, I don't think that, I don't think anybody here is trying to, it sounds like what we're all proposing is within your business model.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not affecting the way you run business by any means. Is that correct?
Not that I'm hearing, the only thing that was, that got my ear was the advertising part of it.
Well, the advertising, and if we want to be consistent with Champagne, right, then we would just have the same language as Champagne has on advertising, if that's okay with Jared? Yeah, Jared says good.
So.
Yeah, Aaron?
Thank you.
Sorry.
So, 10 o'clock, and then the, I would agree with Dean on some of this, I, I appreciate what you just said, but it's like, I don't know, it seems a little premature to me to start saying, let's restrict this and restrict that, and, I mean, people are going to go where they're people, so they're going to drive up and down Main Street.
Just wanted to get the straight word green.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just.
Dennis?
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right, so, so I can see that the, the events on the pedal cart isn't just going to be sorority and fraternity people having a great time. It might be more subdued, it might be wine tasting, it might be coffee. might be wine tasting, it might be coffee in the morning. So I don't really have any problem going up and down Green Street, except for after 10 o'clock at night. But if you're, if the goal is to run from campus, the campus town bars back into the city of Urbana, I mean, that's, at, you know, at 12, I guess I have, you know, a question about how that's going to work out with what is really, you know, somewhat of a residential street with apartments on it and some homes, Green Street in Urbana. A lot of people look down Green Street from Lincoln and don't imagine there could be a city beyond the, the sheltered, arboreal landscape. And there's many, many people who graduate from the University of Illinois who have never visited Urbana, I have found.
Yes. Okay, I think, I think we're kind of divided on this part, so I'd suggest go ahead and forwarding it to council, and if someone can come up with an amendment they want to make next week that's concise and to the point, then they could do that. Jared?
So I'll make a motion if it's left. So, I will move the divided question and concern to the ordinance regarding Chapter 26 alone without amendments, if it will support, be supported by council, that that section moves forward as written with no amendments that have been suggested here tonight, forward to full council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jared, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And Jared, would you like to be excused from the rest of the meeting?
Yeah. Pursuant to the Illinois Liquor Control Act of 1934 and the contents of the Chapter 3 discussion, I must recuse myself from any further discussion. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll discuss Chapter 3, the liquor part. Is there anything to add to that?
Jim Draft of the Liquor, would you like to add anything?
No.
Okay. Aaron?
May sound a little odd, but it's actually somewhat of a serious question for me. The, some of the bars we have, I don't know exactly what the ordinance is or what the regulation is, but there's a responsibility for the bartenders when they're seeing individuals who are, who've had too much. And so, as it relates to residential rides and, or going down residential streets, if there was someone who had too much in that two-hour period, how do you regulate that, and would you drop somebody off at home?
To answer your first question, all of our, our bartenders are, I'm not sure of the acronym, back to trained, yes. Thank you. So they know how to address that. If someone is too intoxicated, they will cut them off.
Would you drop them off?
We don't knock them off, no.
No, not knock off, drop them off.
No, drop them off. We do not, we're not, we're not a taxicab. So, our business runs from a, from a pickup point and a drop-off point, which is basically the same thing. So, they all park their cars in the same spot, and that's where they leave and depart from. We take them right back to where we start. So, no, to answer your question, we will not take them home.
And to answer that first part of your question, too, both companies, they have a stop waiver if someone's, they all have to sign, all the passengers that are 21 and older, they have to sign it before they get on the ride, is my understanding. And if someone has had too much to drink, that server or driver or both, whichever one it is, can stop them and not serve them any longer.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to send ordinance number 2018-02-011, and ordinance amending city code chapters 3 and 26 pedal bus operating and liquor license forward to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Motion by Aaron, seconded by Dean. That was for Chapter 3. We did 26 already.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.